I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order for Tuesday, October ninth, two thousand and eighteen. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Anybody for a weekly briefing?
Your mic needs to be. Your mic needs to be.
You can't hear me? Hi Carolyn.
Hi Carolyn, Cary Community Center Director. I wanted to start with one we haven't talked about already, but we're doing again for our thirteenth year in a row to help, to support our troops. Cape Cod cares for their troops, and I know it sounds very early, but we have to get the items back so they can be mailed out. So there is a donation box at the front of the community center with a flyer. It is online, and there is a list of things that you can donate, socks, toiletries, things like that. So we are doing that in partnership with other local organizations just to support our troops. It's important to remember that not everyone's home for the holidays. Then I know you haven't heard this before, but we're having the boutique, and we do need costumes, so if you would like to donate costumes, we would love that. But the boutique itself is on October eighteenth, from five to eight at the community center. We also have our coloring contest going on right now, and guess the candy coins. We have two, one is for adults, and one is for anyone under the age of sixteen. And then lastly is, of course, the Touch a Truck event, which is on this Saturday in the parking lot at the community center, and it's free. And we're excited to work with all the different departments and some local businesses who are providing us trucks.
Right. Thank you. Thank you Carolyn. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Anybody for public comments and announcements? Larry?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I just want to briefly report on your noting the absence of the Harwich Cranberry Harvest races this year. They were canceled. You may have seen the newspaper article in mid-August explaining why. But how it was ended, I think you need to know about. It was simply a matter of the numbers being down. As of mid-August, there were only a hundred and thirty-three people signed up for the two races. It can't be financially viable without a few hundred. So the race director canceled it, refunded the registration fees, and because there were two or three organizations in town that depend on earning some money by working as volunteers at the race, he donated both to the student organization at the high school that's related to Darfur Stand, I believe it's called, and also donated to the Little League, the Chatham-Harwich Little League organization that allowed us to use the edge of the field for the post-race festivities. And also donated something to the, a Policeman's Association, not as much to any of them as they would have earned had the race been held. It would be nice if there were some way to revive the shorter race, the ten K, in conjunction with the Fall for Harwich or the Cranberry Festival. That race doesn't entail tying up the streets very much, doesn't require detours, so it, the expense of running that race might be a lot less. And so I'm looking into it, but don't have any takers yet, you know, to take it on. But I thought you should know about the end of it.
Thank you Larry, we appreciate that. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Anita?
Good evening. I don't usually come before you, but I know on the warrant tonight you have the, for your Selectmen's Meeting, you have the warrant for the election in November, and I thought I'd just mention a couple of things. The last day to register to vote is going to be this Wednesday, the seventeenth, a week from tomorrow, the seventeenth. And if anyone's, you know, hasn't registered to vote, please make sure that they can come into the town hall, and we'll be open until eight o'clock next Wednesday for voting registration. Also, early voting is going to be starting on the twenty-second of October, and it runs through the second of November. I know that we are open on Monday nights for the convenience of anyone that would like to vote early. They will be available to have someone come in and vote until eight o'clock, both those Monday nights. I know the town hall is closed on Friday, but I have chosen, and I've also notified the state, that I will be willing to be open from noon until four o'clock on those, both of those Friday afternoons, for the convenience for anyone that would like to come in and vote early also. There will be an article going out, I believe, in the Cape Cod Chronicle and also in the Cape Times. The Cape Times will list all the towns that are going to be early voting across the Cape, and the Chronicle will just list. I know I've sent them a press release for early voting and also for voter registration. So would, do you have any questions for me?
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Nope, we're good. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Judy.
I just wanted to make an announcement. The Friends of the South Harwich Meeting House is going to be having a phenomenal auction on the twenty-eighth of October, and I have some wonderful flyers that explain what we're going to be doing, and I think that no one in Harwich is really going to want to miss this event. We have phenomenal things that are being donated, and the auction's going to be featuring John Terrio as our auctioneer, and he's really excited about the building, and this is really our final push for the final end of the project, while we move into cultural arts and performance and education and community gathering. So I will leave this information here. We are limited to two hundred at the meeting house, so if people are seriously wanting to come, we have at the bottom of this pager, here we have a place for tickets, and you can, you can actually purchase them now at our new website, southharwichmeetinghouse.ejoinme.org/automoction. And we're hoping to fill the meeting house and have just a spectacular time with wonderful hors d'oeuvres and a, and a great afternoon for the town.
That's wonderful.
And the meeting house.
What time is it?
It's going to be between two and five PM on Sunday afternoon, October twenty-eighth.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for?
I'll leave these on the table.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you Judy. Anybody else for public comments or announcements? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to present the consent agenda and move adoption of the items thereon, including a vote to sign the November election warrant, and B, approve the appointment of an additional election worker per the request of the Democratic Town Committee.
Second.
So moved and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearings and presentations, annual meetings, Cemetery Commission?
Good evening, I'm Cindy Eldridge from the Cemetery Commission.
Good evening.
The Harwich Cemetery Commission is comprised of three appointed Harwich residents charged with overseeing the town seventeen cemeteries with the Cemetery Administrator, Robin Kelly. The commissioners are as follows, Cynthia Eldridge, Karen Young, and Stephen Connor. All of the commissioners have been sworn in and have up-to-date state ethics testing. Commission meets the first Tuesday of each month. Over the past twelve months, we had ten meetings, five of which were attended by all members and five with two members. Commission supports and provides guidance to the Cemetery Administrator, prioritizes yearly expenditures of revenues derived from annual lot sales, and establishes policies and regulations related to the public use, operation, and maintenance of the town cemeteries. The total acreage of the town cemeteries covers over a hundred acres. Each year, the number of cremation burials is increasing, and the commission will be exploring revisions in certain lot sizes to better accommodate this trend. As of September fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the available balance in the commission's annual revolving fund was ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty oh one. And I don't know if you want me to read all of this, I know you all have it in your packets.
We all, yeah, we all have it in the packet, you don't have to read it.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions, comment?
I'm sorry. Thank you Cindy.
Thank you very much, appreciate the report. Okay, on to Harwich Energy Committee.
Hi, Valerie Bell, Harwich Energy Committee. And basically, this year, our main push was to help facilitate the Green Communities project, and I think that we're well on our way to meeting those goals, and hopefully soon we'll be a green community. I know that there has been some talk about the SMART program, which is a solar program run by the state, and I know that the Selectmen have been looking into, with SEVAC have been looking into maybe pursuing that for our plot of land that we had set aside for the Green Communities requirements. We've been trying to meet with the building committees on all the new buildings that are going up in Harwich, at Sacquet Tucket and the fire station, and to try to, just to see, you know, what the energy conservation plans are for those buildings. Larry says everything looks good, they have, are adhering to good building code and will be energy efficient when they are done. We are a small committee, getting smaller all the time. Larry has, our fearless leader, is finally calling it quits, and he's threatening to retire, and we wish him the best, but that leaves us down a person, and we definitely need that person. We often have, we often struggle to get a quorum and to keep, keep going, so we're, we hope we can get some new blood in the process. Another thing I'm excited about is, last year, all the energy committees on the Cape got together at Cape Light Compact Office and met for the first time, and it was interesting to hear from the other energy committees on the Cape what's going on, what they're doing, some of their trials and tribulations. And we're having the second annual meeting on Thursday, November first, and we'll continue representing Harwich at those meetings. And I have to say, I'm very proud to be from Harwich. This town, this board, has been very supportive of energy and energy efficiency, and sad to say, that's not true of every town on the Cape. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I don't, no. Nice report.
I would like to thank you, because you've really educated the town greatly in, in terms of being a green community, and we've failed a loss with Larry as well, and, you know, certainly make it known that you're in need of another committee member, and like to thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Okay. A presentation of the FY two thousand and twenty Selectmen's Budget Message, which I don't think we need to read that. But overall, does anyone have any comments or?
I think it's well done, thank you.
Thank you. Dawn?
Yeah, I'm just, the overview of it is, it's going to be a tough next few years between the borrowings and.
Well, we can run through it, I didn't mean that, I just.
No, no, no.
I wasn't going to read it word for word.
I just wanted to assure everybody that we're taking into account both the bonding for things that are within town and bonding for things that we're just getting handed a bill for, like the regional schools and the tech school.
Right. So I think overall, just to run through the various pieces of the message, what we've accomplished in terms of, you know, commitment to the infrastructure in our town, in particular with, you know, building a new fire station and Sacquet Tucket Harbor, and how well that has come along, again with two million dollars in state aid grants, and also to look forward, as Dawn has noted, about what our commitments are to the tech school and to our other debt in terms of sewer, and continuing on with infrastructure improvements. Overall, we also talked about the fact that, you know, we have various issues that we have to address in town in terms of workforce housing, affordable housing, and, you know, how we get there and our trust with our newly developed trust, and trying to figure out ways and innovative ways that we can create more housing for, you know, those aging to stay in place, whether it be through an accessory dwelling unit, or whether it be through zoning changes. So, you know, that's a quick overview, I don't think, you know, unless anybody wants to go into any more depth, the budget message is available for everybody to view, so I think I'll leave it at that.
Thank you Julie for your time on this.
No problem. Okay, so on to our next section, which is our financial reports, that Carol has spent a lot of time to try to help us in simplifying how to discern the various reports we get. Hi Carol.
Hi, good evening. One of the Board of Select members had asked for some clarification and some financial reports for FY eighteen, and also asked for some pretty specific detail with the spending by month for the last quarter. And so I thought that it would be helpful to show these, this information in the same format that is provided to the public in the warrant book. And so that's how I formatted all of this. So it's not a direct, like a report that comes out of the town's financial accounting package, it's something that's manually entered. And so the first report that I provided, and I'll just preface this by saying this is all the operating budget, it's what we call the general fund, is, so the first report that I provided is actual revenues versus what was budgeted, and the results of that. And it is summarized by, you know, real estate and personal property, and then local receipts, state aid, and then transfers in from, from other sources that are used to pay debt, to fund budgets, and things of that nature. I'd be happy to go over this in detail if you'd like, or field questions, if you have any, if you want to do it one report at a time, if you'd like me to go through all three of them, I can do that as well, I'm happy to do anything you'd like.
Let me see what the board would like to do, does anyone want to go through it, I don't think we want to go piece by piece, but does anyone have any particular questions on this first, first section? Go ahead Dawn.
It's not just, it's not really a question for me, but for the general public, if they're looking at something like this, and it got to the point where you were low on information technology salaries and wages on line nine thirty-three, we don't just take money from line nine thirty-six and plant it there without a process, right?
That's correct.
So, I just want to make sure, because people over the past year have gotten a little off the mark and confused about, that we are a line item budget, unlike the schools, and what you see here is what they're allocated, and that's what they spend.
Correct. We don't have any authorization to do any transfers, budget transfers. The only authorization that we have for that process is to either ask for a reserve fund transfer from the Finance Committee, or to come to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee at the end of the fiscal year and ask for a budget transfer.
Thank you Carol.
Do you have any specific questions with regard to the revenue report that I provided?
I do not, do you have any?
I do not.
Okay. So the expenditure report, and I apologize, it's small print, there's a lot of information on here, the report is meant to read from left to right, so you start out with what the voted budget was for FY eighteen, and then we were asked to provide spending by month for each quarter, for the last quarter of the fiscal year, so you'll have April spending and May spending and June spending. These are summarized by major categories, so they're summarized by salaries and wages. You may have five different line items in salaries and wages, some will be part-time, full-time, overtime, longevity, so these are summarized by major category. Within the expenses, you'll have, in some departments, a tremendous amount of expense line items, could be twenty or thirty. These are summarized by major category, which is expense. And then you have the final total that was expended for the fiscal year, and then the balance remaining, and what percentage was remaining. You'll notice here that for the month of June, you'll see salaries and wages seem to be much higher than they were in the previous two months, and that's because there were five pay periods in the month of June, whereas there were only four in April and May. In addition to that, we make some final year-end payments for longevity and things like that at the end of the fiscal year. This is the exact format, with the exception of the detail for the last quarter, for April, May, and June, but this, other than that, this is the exact format that's provided to you in the warrant.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Larry?
Thank you Carol, well done, this really helps to explain. One item caught my eye, is that we have twelve thousand dollars in capital, recreational capital outlay, that we spent nothing on that, what was that anyway, recreational?
What, I'm sorry, what department?
Recreational capital outlay.
But.
So. I was going to say, in the past, I think they've been the lights at the ball fields to be replaced.
Is that where it was sourced?
In the past.
And they didn't need it?
Yeah, when we run the ball.
So, so the department budget's on an annual basis, as far as I know, from my history here, capital outlay, and this twelve thousand dollars was budgeted and it was not expended.
Yeah, it wasn't that serious a question, but I was just wondering. Just to understand this, we have basically one point four million dollars, does that flow directly into free cash then, or what, where's that go?
Where does the one point four million dollars?
The total, the four point three that were under budget?
The leftover amount on the budget, it would flow to free cash unless it was encumbered.
Correct. That goes into your calculations for free cash. Your excess revenues.
Right.
And your unexpended.
The discussion we should have, Dawn, is keep, you know, that we understand that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Other questions? The last report I think you have is an overtime report. That overtime report is for the last fiscal, for the last quarter of the fiscal year. We provided that report in, by department, there was, in total, during the fiscal year, there was, for the operating budget, there was one point six million dollars, just over one point six million dollars expended in overtime. Of that, the major categories where it was spent was police, fire, and DPW departments. There was, there was overtime expended out of water enterprise as well, but I was not presenting that financial report this evening.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the overtime?
Is the overtime basically in line with previous years, do you know? I'm just asking, because we have so much, many people on roadwork, for instance.
Well, I mean, for police and fire, overtime is, is, or IODs, injured on duties, affect your overtime, so.
Say that again.
Injured, folks that are out on injuries, when they're injured on duty, so, so they have to cover the holes or, you know, the schedules. And so you will incur significant overtime in those instances. And then for DPW, it's a lot of that is your snow and ice budget for overtime.
And we did have three nor'easters off the pitch.
Yeah, I just wanted, when I look at this, it's probably not that much different than previous years, but I was just curious.
I do think, Madam Chair, just the opportunity, I think on the overtime, particularly in police and fire, we have a lot of state regulations that require additional training, so probably, I mean, just roughly, a third of it could be training-related dollars, and then as Carol pointed out, IOD, injured on duty, people know it as workers' compensation for police and fire, they have a separate statute called injured on duty, so we've had kind of a tough couple of years here with injured on duty. And then really, the remaining third, if you would, is just incidents come up. And one thing that we do, which I think is a good practice in this community, is in the summertime, we actually supplement with overtime instead of bringing in additional bodies. And if you bring in additional bodies, then that means health insurance costs and others. So it is a little, little bit of an expensive way of doing it, but it has been effective and it does work, but it does tend to skew your overtime being a little higher, because we don't have a staffing level that ramps up above and beyond in the summer, we don't have auxiliary forces and things of that nature that I've seen in some other communities.
Michael?
So just on that, Chris, the training, shouldn't that be in the budget, if that's one-third, and we know that they're going to do it? I mean, I get the injured on duties, I get all that, I'm not questioning it, but shouldn't that be in the budget?
I think in terms of the training, we usually put training dollars in, but when you have to send a whole crew out, you need to backfill, so some, it's more backfill, so we do training in the training amount, and then we do have to cover those shifts that we have people out at training. I think I have that. Chief's nodding, so I'm on the right track, okay.
A lot of the, it's budgeted.
It's budgeted overtime too, and we anticipate that this is going to happen.
Yeah. Only other question is, transfer station, thirty-two thousand in overtime, what do we have overtime at the dump for? We're open seven days a week, it's scheduled, it should be budgeted, why are we overtime thirty-two thousand at the dump?
Yeah, I'll have to check, I would think that just staffing issues would potentially lead to that if you had people out. I will check though, I'm not as, it's usually not been, I think, as big of an issue in the past, so it's something that I'll have to look at.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Thank you Carol.
Welcome.
We appreciate you putting that together, I know it was a lot of work, but it's helpful because there's so many different numbers we're looking at. Okay. And the presentation, the overview of Route one thirty-seven of Route thirty-nine corner site, Chief.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening, Chief.
Chris, not only are we building a fire station, but apparently we're going to make this the nicest-looking intersection on Cape Cod.
Oh, really?
What started off as kind of a, really a self-motivated plan from the Highway Department, I'm not taking credit for this, it really, it was, came from the Highway Department to, now that we are going to build that fire station out there, was to look at that corner and see what we could do with it. And the idea was to, there's a lot of scrub pines out there, to take those out, all the loam that came from building Montemoy, apparently part of the, the understanding was that, that they scraped and moved, has been stored and has to stay in town. So, with the availability of the DPW and the availability of the loam, we were going to be able to just kind of clean it up and take up some scrub pines, leave the good trees, and the project grew some legs. We also have in town some talent with Amy, and Charlene helped to say, well, if we're going to do that, why don't we just take it a step further? But I want to be very clear, the phase, now that, now it has phases. So, the first phase was something we were going to do in-house. We were going to be able to clean it up, put some grass down, I'm working with the contractor to be able to provide some future irrigation for the area, for bushes and grass, because if you don't do that, it won't live. So we're going to be able to do that. But the idea was pushed a little further, to the point where engineering in the towns of Eric, along with Amy, came up with a plan for walkways, to reuse a flagpole, and to make it a much nicer area. A couple of points I want to make on this is, well, where are folks going to park? If they wanted to go there, where are they going to park? Well, we're actually going to be in a good spot. If you see where it says Route one thirty-seven up to the, up to the left, and there's three circles, four circles there, those are existing cherry trees, they're going to remain. Well, if we were able to leave part of the parking lot for the existing fire station, we would have a place for people to park. There's not going to be enough public parking, nor are we going to encourage public parking at the new substation. So that would provide an area if someone wanted to park there and enjoy the corner when and if it's finished. The other part of that, I would need authorization from the Board, is to eliminate sidewalk, because the agreement was, when we presented the project to the Board, it included a sidewalk on the Route thirty-nine side from the new station to the intersection to pick up the existing sidewalk, bring it around the corner, north up one thirty-seven, and we own a piece of sidewalk that would cross in front of the existing Station Two driveway. We wouldn't need that, if we're going to, if we're going to use that for parking. So, it's self-explanatory, there's, it's going to be grass, there'll be flowers and some trees and some benches down the road. I don't, I don't have a funding source, but I have to go to the planning board to get to phase, the first step, and that's to work with the Highway Department when we have time to clean it up, some scrub pines down, and get some loam and grass down, and then, if you like what you see here, we'll work with the Board to see how we can pay for the rest of it.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Dawn?
Yeah, it's not so much of a question, Norman and I are on kind of different sides of the same thought here, because without the DPW Director, it's kind of difficult to have the discussion. But this park, just so that everybody's clear, was always in the site plan of the tower. There was fifteen thousand dollars set aside at that time when that was built. There was $15,000 set aside at that time, when that was built. And beyond that, there was $50,000. Some, that went to the communications. The 15 was supposed to stay on the side, and so, we did something as a pocket park. It was never ambitious, it was just supposed to be a couple of benches and you could just sit there. Not sure where the 15,000 went, over the passage of time, but regardless of what the final plan is, it was always there. We actually had money to do it, and it was always supposed to be there. And the flagpole has to stay, because it's not an ornament, it's a cell tower.
The flagpole I was referring to, that we would move, would be the existing flagpole at the existing fire station. We'd just move that down, because the new, the new fire station is getting a new flagpole.
But ultimately, this still looks consistent with what the original plan is, although a lot's biffier. Because it was always designed to just be a place to sit and rest, and stare out, and then leave. It was just a pocket park, that's all it ever was, and it looks like, even though it's beefed up, that's what it still is. It's an ornamental version of a pocket park.
I think it will complement, you know, if you come into town, I am always amazed, coming into town on especially, you know, a cool fall day, you see that flag, it's, even at night, it's really nice, either way, when you come in, and this will enhance that down the road. But it certainly will be in the, and so, we'll, Director Hooper looking for direction on funding to make it look like this. Again, with your approval, I will, I will proceed to the Planning Board, I'm already scheduled for that, but with your approval, we will go ahead and do what we can in-house, with available material and labor, to do what we can do to make it look nice. And if, and then, we'd have to come back, revisit this with some ideas on how to, you know, really finish it off.
Any other questions, Larry?
Well, Chris knows that I need to be consistent on this. I would like, I like where you're going with it, but I would like to know what the effort is from the Highway Department, because it's always fair that, you know, it's not free labor, it's town labor, so we should account for that. The one, and so, I'd like to see that, you know, going forward.
Well, I think we could keep track of the hours. The idea was, we've missed the window. There's a, there's a period of time after summer, before they start doing roadside brushing, and before they start preparing for sand and plowing and salt. They had a window that they could have dedicated a man and a machine. And we certainly could keep track of the hours. We don't know until we do it.
We need to know what the total cost is, including, because, you know, as I tell Link, they're real people, too, and we pay for them.
Well, we keep track, we could, if you, if that's what you like, we can keep track of the hours.
I would need to understand better your comment about not needing a sidewalk, because we've been striving for sidewalks everywhere in town where we can.
Let me, let me re-explain that.
Maybe explain that.
If, if you so choose to proceed with this, we need a place for people to park. The existing ramp, the existing ramp to Station 2 could stay. We would just saw-cut it at some point and take down the old fire station a year from now. But, before we, we thought of this, all of it was coming out. All the pavement, all the tar was coming out with the old fire station, which would include the sidewalk. But if we're gonna have parking for this potential park, we wouldn't, you can't have a sidewalk, because then you can't, you wouldn't have any place to park.
So, Norm, my question is, can I walk down, can I safely walk up 137 then?
So, he's saying you'll, you'll just remove the section of sidewalk that goes over where you would pull into park, correct?
Through the park.
No.
So, you walk through the?
What he's saying, what he's saying is, right now, there's a driveway.
That's what I'm saying.
And, and they were gonna take it out and put a sidewalk in.
And you're gonna leave it?
But you're gonna leave the driveway and you just...
Right, that's what I'm saying, if you're gonna remove that portion.
And walk across the driveway.
Right.
So, you could safely do that.
Yeah.
Right.
Good, I don't wanna get run over if I walk up.
Right, so that section, only that section, that's currently where the trucks come in and out, will remain as the ramp part, that you'll just pull in and park, and you'll just lose that portion of the sidewalk.
Let me go back to the discussion on the time issue. Still, you're still not going quite the direction I'm hoping we go on all-town projects, whereas, we're not kind, we, we have some estimate going forward, so it helps in our decision-making on whether we want to expend the time and money to do a project. After the fact doesn't do that, it's money spent. And I think as a Board, we should have some, as, as deciders, using bad language, we should have an input of what the total cost is. And so, I like it, in all these type of projects, I like an estimate going forward, so, you know, the five of us can, can make a reasoned decision, not do it after the fact.
I would, if you're looking for a total cost of this project, I'm gonna defer, because I have no idea, and I wouldn't know where to begin. I'm busy building a fire station. I don't, I don't know.
I'm not expecting you to, I'm just saying, that's what I like from the...
We could do that. And as far as the other part, I understand, you're very clear on your, on your thoughts on this. I guess the other side of the coin is, my, my, the way I look at it is, if we have, there are, there are, there are peaks and valleys in workload, and when you can more efficiently use a workforce to do an alternative project, that, that's a better use of, of the time. As opposed to saying how much, but we can keep track of the hours.
No, no, you're still missing, because having that information still allows us to schedule, so we take advantage of peaks and valleys. I'm saying, not having that information leaves us blind going forward of what the total, you know, what the effort's gonna be. They're not competitive ideas, they should work together.
I had to go through the planning process, I would've been here sooner and given you that information, but I was delayed trying to get to the Planning Board.
Thank you, Norm. Michael?
So, this part I totally understand. Norm, thank you for your initiative in doing this, you don't have to, you chose to do it. Chris, can you just get us a ballpark from Link, on what it will cost? Bring machines in, take pine trees down, and spread the loam we already own? That would be nice, and I just want to make sure it doesn't add to next year's overtime number, 22,000. If it's not overtime, like, you know...
No, they were gonna do it as, as they had some, a little slower time, a couple of weeks, again, after the summer, before brushing, and they were able to, they were gonna be able to get in, now it'll have to, it'll have to wait.
That's perfect. Secondly, on, on this plan, Norm's looking for some direction, because he's gonna take his time and go before planning and get this approved, correct?
Yes.
So, the Board needs to give some direction, but the Board also needs to prioritize based on money, which is what we told the public last year, when we passed the wastewater, the fire department, and many other projects. So, I'm not comfortable, I don't want to waste your time, but obviously, we need to get approval for this, but more important, I think, we need to get an estimate, so we have a number, so we can prioritize what we're gonna spend the taxpayers' money on this year. So, how we get there, I mean...
Well, I think, I think Norm also mentioned that there would be phases. So, I mean, I think that we can say that we're comfortable in, say, initial phase, which would be to at least get the dirt and do the trees and do that piece. Which, you know, again, you can get us an estimate on that, which shouldn't be a ton of money. And then, look at it in phases, so that we can at least clean up the area as we move along in the project, and make it look a little bit more presentable, and then, go to the next.
And it's important to know that if you, if you say, nope, leave it the way it is, then I won't go forward with, we're gonna be able to, you know, put up just a sleeve under the driveway for future irrigation. We're gonna, I have a trailer meeting tomorrow, I would say we're gonna hold off on that section of sidewalk. Now, I would say we, we could, should do that, even if we only take down some scrub pines and put some grass out there to make it look nice. That, that I don't see as additional budget money, we're just gonna use our workforce efficiently to get that done. Anything beyond that, it's gonna cost money.
Right, and, and that's where we could look to...
I, I, I would like to have permission or authorization for what I would call Phase 1.
Right.
And come up with a, you know, an estimate of in-house labor, if that's, if that works.
Thank you, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
Material we own, we have to get it there. But I'm thinking it might not be until the spring, but still, with the way these projects go, we have to, I'm learning, you have to think out months ahead.
Right, so, right now, you're looking for at least that direction.
I, I would like your, either yes or no, to do this.
I, I think the idea is, if you have, if you like the concept of putting a park there, then let's, we can continue to explore that. And whatever we can do in-house that's cost-effective, we'll, we'll do. And we will put together a more comprehensive plan for what the actual cost to implement the image is gonna be.
Yeah, I'm certainly in favor of the concept moving forward. I just know these projects, I want to take into account what our in-house labor is, so we can make a decision on, we can't do everything. And we need all the, we should have fair information to make some decisions. And without that, we're, we're making decisions...
For the first, for the original idea of the first phase, we can do it all in-house. Link Hooper has assured me that we will do this all in-house.
But you missed my point, though, I still want to know what that effort is in-house.
Sure. And I think you could take that one step further and say to the taxpayer, this is what we saved you, because we did it in-house. I think that would be a good thing to be able to tell them, tell the folks.
We could do all that.
Ed?
On the diagram, you mentioned moving the flagpole?
Yes.
Where, where, where is it? I can't find it on my little drawing here. I see where the cell tower is.
Where's the flagpole?
Where's the small?
It's the little one.
It's the baby flag. The baby flag.
The flagpole is, the one we have now is kind of, it's small, won't fit.
Yeah, yeah.
The existing flagpole is up by the existing station. The, there is also a flag attached to the cell tower.
Yeah.
So, that is what...
My, it was my understanding, we're gonna move a small flagpole down to buy, maybe buy...
Yeah, just, yeah, point it out.
I don't know. Let's put it right there.
That's the idea. The, where the memorial benches are.
Works for me.
Yeah, okay, so...
Is where the flagpole.
I, I wasn't going crazy not being able to find it, it's just not there yet, okay? All right.
No, that's...
In that exact spot.
Right there.
We're not talking about the cellphone flag, just to be clear, right, right. No, I'm just restating that, so that people understand, we're not talking...
It's a good idea to, we think, to try and reuse the flagpole that's there.
Right, move it from the current spot at the current station over there.
The idea is, if you wanted to sit there, you wouldn't even want to look at the flag, you, you know, you'd string your neck.
This is not me doing this, okay?
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought it was me at first. So, any other questions, Ed?
Well, not, not so much a question as comment, I think the plan is, is delightful, you know, it's well-thought-out, provide nice spaces for people to walk in, to sit, to rest in, and I don't see why we shouldn't, you know, I'm assuming you're gonna go to the Planning Board with the entire plan for their approval, because if it's only loam and scrubbing out trees, they don't really need it. So then, so, and if we're moving ahead of that, I guess the costing I'd like to see is on what it's gonna take to implement the entire plan.
We have some creative ideas on how to, you know, get the trees for a reduced rate, maybe be, maybe use some volunteer labor for some of the plantings, even some of the planting beds, maybe some of the garden centers would like to sponsor a bed. So, they're not, there's nothing definite, but we're definitely looking at cost-saving measures for this. Chris?
Just, just from the experience up at the golf course, we kind of went a little crazy and cleared a little bit more than we wanted to, and kind of got hands slapped by Planning Board. So, I do think that we have to present the overall plan to Planning Board, with the idea that it'll be phasing, depending upon, you know, really, the funding sources to be able to accomplish it.
But for tonight, so that Norm...
So, he can go to Planning Board, I would recommend that the Board at least acquiesce and say that it's a concept that's worth pursuing.
Okay, so, can I get a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion, it's just consensus.
Or do you need a consensus?
I take it as, just for the minutes, an acquiescence to have Norm continue to go forward and present to Planning Board.
Right, so I think we're all in agreement.
And, and a request that costing of the full, implementing the full plan be developed.
Right, so we'll get the phased costing as we go along, but at least you know that going forward, you can go to the plan.
Sure, I'll ask Link Hooper to break down the cost of in-house. That'll be Phase 1, let's call it Phase 1, and then, going further, I'm gonna have to rely on Amy, she is the expert in these, in this type of thing. I, I don't know.
Which is also the cost of irrigation and walkways and other hard surfaces.
And I'm glad you mentioned that. We also are very fortunate to have in-house expertise on irrigation, so it would be, again, time, and, but it would just be material. In other words, the, our in-house guy from the Highway Maintenance is doing the irrigation at the Harbor project. It's not being sourced out. That would be the same.
Okay, great, thank you, Norm. So, we'll go on to New Business Committee appointments, Affordable Housing Trust, Judith Underwood, for a full member, to expire on 6/30/21. Do you guys want to?
Don, you want to take that, or?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion for, well, actually, can I do it for both positions? Unless there's an objection, if somebody wants to pull one out. I move that we appoint Brendan Loney to a full position on the Historic District Historical Commission to expire 6/30/19, and we appoint Judith Underwood to the Affordable Housing Trust for a full position to expire 6/30/21.
Second.
Seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. B, Howard Conservation Trust, Western Woods Road slash Island Pond Train and Zero Depot Street, a vote to sign the two conservation restrictions. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Michael Locke, Executive Director of the nonprofit Howard Conservation Trust. Thanks for including these two land protection projects on your agenda. By way of background, I'll just give a little history on each of the acquisitions by the town of these properties. The former Hall property was acquired for conservation purposes by the town using Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds on February 2nd of 2016. And the two lots that comprise the property formerly owned by Cynthia K. Sutphen was acquired for conservation purposes using Town Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds on May 17th, 2016. The Community Preservation Act State Statute requires an overlay protection on properties acquired with open space Community Preservation Act-sourced funds. These conservation restrictions are designed to conform with the state statute and provide that overlay protection. Howard Conservation Trust has partnered with the town of Harwich in several instances to help comply with the Community Preservation Act. And these conservation restrictions have been reviewed by Town Council and also reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission. And part of the approval process is your review and discussion and signature approval.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the Board? Michael?
On the Hall property, Michael, our vote was a little different than what's outlined in that conservation restriction, or the hunting piece particularly. The Board voted to exclude that line item number nine about hunting, and it's in there still. And just on history on that, when this property was purchased, it went to town meeting, town meeting approved the purchase of the property. An article that night sought to get rid of hunting on that property, which failed. And then, you were before us to speak about this, and we amended the motion to exclude that language of hunting on the Hall property.
Yes, agreed.
It's still in that tonight.
It's still in the conservation restriction? Okay, so, let's delete that provision per your background. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Michael. Ed, any questions, please? Don? Okay, get a motion.
I move that we approve the requests from the Howard Conservation Trust for the conservation restrictions on Western Woods, uh-uh, Pond? Western Woods Road and Island Pond Train and Zero Depot Street.
Trail, yeah.
Trail, okay, yeah. It says train, okay.
It does say train.
Trail, I thought it was... Trail, and to change the Zero Depot Street to exclude number nine, the no hunting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, thank you.
And a request for winter boat storage at Sakwatake Harbor. This is under our New Business.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is John Martens, and I'm here with my wife Judy Lagergrin. And I read the meeting, the minutes of the last meeting, so we don't need to go through that whole thing when y'all were here last month, just to make it easier. I also spoke with Mr. Rendon, Harbor Master Rendon, a couple of weeks ago.
Rendon, John Rendon, right.
So, we have a boat that we kept in Wellfleet for several years. And when we moved over to this side of the Cape, we went into the Harbor Master's office to make sure we'd be able to store the boat over here, and we found a place to put it over at Stage Harbor in Jadda. And then, we moved over to this side, and it was supposed to be a annual thing where we'd store... And then we moved over to this side, and it was supposed to be a annual thing where we'd store it at Sacquetucket and keep it at Stage Harbor in the, in the summer. And then things changed. I know what happened with the meeting. Mr. Hour came in here, he was concerned about the town being in competition with local boat haulers as far as storage and so forth. I've known the Hours for over forty years. I actually was there today. This particular boat has got a twenty-one foot beam. It's really wide. There's only three places on Cape Cod we can haul it out, Sacquetucket, Sandwich, and Wellfleet. Wellfleet only does commercial boats now for the winter. Sandwich is full, and Harwich has been, as you know, under construction for the last year. Last year, the boat spent the winter over at John Hours at a dock, tied up in the water all winter. Caused some damage and a lot of consternation and concern. Oh, it needs to come out of the water for safety's sake before we, you know, go another season with it. So it's a, it's a real issue. It's the only place the boat could really come out, other than a shipyard, which is not, it isn't particularly long, it's just wide. It's a sailing catamaran. We've had it for a number of years. We thought we'd be able to keep it at Sacquetucket. We were kind of led to believe that that would be the case, and the winter to leave it there. But apparently the plan changed due to somebody complaining, et cetera, et cetera. There is no other place I can haul it out. I've talked to Allen's Harbor Marine, I've talked to John Hour and everybody, and there's no other place I can put it. I've been told that the stockade area, I call it, where the, the sense is it's out opposite of the old Thompson's Fire Market, soon to be the medical center, is been leased this coming year by Allen's Harbor. Is that correct?
They have a lease with us.
Yeah, they have a lease with you. But they have inadequate, inadequate space to put that particular vessel in that stockade area because that's generally boats on trailers that are smaller. There is an area we can put the boat that won't interfere with ongoing operations at the harbor with septic and so forth. But we have no other place to, to put the darn thing, so we're kind of stuck. I mean, we acted in good faith, thinking that we were moving over to this side of the Cape to, found a place to put the boat and found a place to store the boat, and then things changed because of the decisions of this board that we weren't able to store it. So now I'm kind of stuck.
Okay, so we did have conversation about moving forward with winter boat storage at Sacquetucket. But as you point out, not in terms of the limited access for these types of boats came up multiple times.
Yeah, it's the only boat like it.
Chris?
Just as a follow-up, after the board had had its discussion and wanted to pursue doing the, the winter boat storage, I did go and, and look at the site with, with John Rendon. And one of the things that we realized is that the site is still under construction, and we still need to put in the septic system. So just from a timing perspective, we probably don't have sufficient time for this season to do the necessary bid work, finish everything that needs to be done with the septic system. So we probably aren't gonna be able to, to do something on a broader scale than originally anticipated. So that has kind of changed a little bit, kind of the, the thought process, at least that I had after going and walking the site. I appreciate the.
Now, please don't interrupt me, you know, I know more about it than I do. I just, so.
And so, I mean, if the board wanted to, I mean, I'd have to defer to John to see if there's a mechanism to allow a one boat to kind of do that.
Good evening, John.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, John Rendon, Harbor Master. So, I'm working on an RFP as directed by the board. I don't have it done yet, but as town administrator stated, you know, we're getting ready here, probably next week, getting CC construction on site to, to dig up the parking lot, to put in the leach field. So we will be under construction. And so, you know, my plan initially, when some of the residents came forward requesting for winter boat storage, if I, if it was allowed for the town to do it, I would have just, you know, had a small number available that stayed out of the construction area, and I could have accommodated that. But when we do the lease, the lease is gonna be pretty much most of that west side parking lot. And we just can't enter into a lease with the construction the way it is. So I, while I'll proceed with the RFP and have it, you know, ready to go, I don't anticipate executing that until next season.
Okay, thank you, John. I think, so to answer your question is, you know, we, we've had the discussion and based on our construction schedule, it's, it's not something that we can entertain at this time, unfortunately. So, we, and we hear you because there were a few other boat owners here that evening talking about the same difficulty.
Oh, yeah.
And if I remember correctly, Mr. Hour said that with the correct, if, for instance, if he were to bid on the RFP, he would be able to store boats similar to yours with the appropriate mechanisms that do so. Forgive me because I, I don't know those particulars. So it, it sounds as if the, that part of our RFP next year may very well be that you'll be able to have that ability.
Yeah.
It's just that it's not gonna be now.
Well, I talked to Mr. Hour about it, and he's fully willing to, you know, haul the boat and do the work and everything. They just don't have a suitable ramp to haul it out over there at Harwichport Marine. So the only place it can come out is Sacquetucket. And there is a place to put it over there that'll be out of the, you know, way of the construction, which is over by where the existing entity, Allen's Harbor, will be storing their boats. So it really doesn't prevent, you know, present a problem as far as storage for the town. It doesn't throw a monkey wrench into the plans as far as the installation of the septic or any ongoing construction over there. And since I'd originally planned on putting it there and had discussed it with Harbor Master Rendon about putting it there back in 2016, and I was led to believe it was only this past year that we wouldn't be able to have it there, then things have just changed. I'm kind of in a rock and a hard place. I have no place to put a boat. I'm stuck.
And I understand, and I am sure that it's a difficult situation, but we did have other members, you know, of the community here too, looking for similar situations. So we're really not in a position where we could award it to one person to store their boat there and not allow others that were here as well.
Well, except that the fact that this particular boat has a twenty-one foot beam, and it's unusual. I mean, most other boats have an eight or ten foot beam. They can come out in other places. We just don't have that luxury. We just can't come out anywhere else.
John?
I'd just like to say a couple of things. One, I understand his situation, but we have boats in our marina that are slip permit holders that are residents that have very similar circumstances. And I'm not gonna pick one and not the other and get into that game because while his beam is the issue, there's sailboats whose masts are the issue, and their depth are the issues, and there's all kinds of issues to deal with. And, and while I sympathize with him, I think I'd made it clear the year that we did allow boat storage, the, the one year, obviously, we wanted to pursue that, but it didn't happen, and I think you were made aware of that. So I just don't want to be in a position where I'm allowing a circum, you know, a special circumstance because there are a lot of special circumstances out there.
Right, understood, yep. Any other comments from the board?
No.
Don, no? Okay, so I'm sorry, but, you know, at this point, with the construction phase the way it is, we are not gonna be able to offer that. And then, you know, next year, when the RFP, when we have bidders and such, you know, we'll go forward from there. Our apologies, but other people find themselves in similar positions.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, on to name the pet burial ground property, Harwich Memorial Gardens and Walking Park. Is anyone, oh, there's Robin. Hi, Robin.
Robin Kelly, Cemetery Administrator. We had come before the board before, and you gave us direction to go back and not name it after a person, and that you wanted Harwich in the name. So the Cemetery Commission, at one of our meetings, came up with this name, and they wanted me to put it before you for a vote.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any comments from the board? Don?
Oh, yeah. Since that time, there's been a lot of water that's gone under the bridge. First of all, it doesn't exist currently. There's been no capital vote, and it's gonna be on this coming town meeting. So it, there is no pet burial ground at the moment. Second of all, if it gets the approval at town meeting, there's no money. Because the money that's in the revolving account can't be spent on that. We got legal advice at town meeting relative to that, that the, the only thing that that cemetery money can be used for is for human remains. So that it'd have to be a fund that would, well, that's the advice that John Giorgio gave.
Just.
Chris?
Just if I could clarify that, that's a hundred percent true for the perpetual care in the revolving account that we have. I would remind this board that when we had the cultural center, we did segment the money aside for the cultural center and then formally adopted the revolving account for the cultural center. And we could certainly do that again if the board was to designate this as a pet burial ground, start to collect revenue on the auspices that once we get the appropriate legal authority to expend the money. But we could start to collect the money even now through the general fund until such time as it gets ratified by town meeting at a revolving account that would be specifically set up for the purposes of doing pet burial. I just, it is possible to do. I just wanna make sure that we segment that out.
I'm not finished yet.
Oh, sorry.
Through you, Madam Chair. That, that may be correct, except that the other aspect of this is, since it doesn't exist, selling a plot to populate an account that doesn't exist either is kind of difficult because you can't sell it without being able to tell what would form a contract, which is what you're doing. When you sell a, a pet burial plot, you're actually entering into a contract with a private individual that in exchange for whatever money it is they're spending, that you'll be burying the animal in the following manner. We can't do that because we don't, we don't have it laid out. And I've got two other issues, and then you can address them all at once.
Don, can I?
Can, Mike, Michael?
Can I just answer, can I just get clarification on what you're saying before you go? I don't want to get lost. I'm a bit confused. This went to town meeting? Town meeting voted this to be a pet burial ground?
That's not true.
It's not true that they gave it to the Cemetery Commission to make a pet burial ground out of it?
They set the property aside to create a pet burial ground, but there was no follow-on action to create a capital project to build. It's much like a school getting approval for a piece of property to be a school. It was never a capital project because it was never approved by the town meeting to be one.
I have a few more things to say, but Chris, Chris wants to clarify that.
Hold, hold on. Chris?
Yeah, just, Michael's right in terms of that, that the designation that was done at town meeting is the property was under the control of the Board of Selectmen. It was transferred from Board of Selectmen for the purposes of general municipal use to the Cemetery Commission for the purposes of a pet burial ground. So the, the legal process of changing and reusing it for the specific purpose of pet burial ground has been accomplished. The funding to, to effectuate that has not been identified and in place yet. But, but it is a pet burial ground. I don't think it's fair to say that it's not. It's been provided, and that was at a duly-called town meeting and approved at town meeting for that purpose.
Thank you, Chris. Larry?
Well, this got far more complicated than I thought it was gonna be when I read this. Seems to me that the request is, is that we name, you could say we name an idea. You know, it's not addressing the funding or any of the other issues that's been raised. And I see no problem with naming, providing a name to have someone identify this going forward with their discussions. This seems rather superficial to have a name that we can, that we can use to discuss the issue with. I wasn't, I didn't read any of this discussions about funding and legal actions and all this, simply the name.
Naming of it, right, right. Well, that is what is before us tonight, is just naming it. And in the sense that, you know, it's been, we all know that it was voted at town meeting to be a burial ground. To your point, Don, it's, you know, the funding mechanisms and the approvals and the account. So I guess the question is, you know, did you have another comment?
Yeah. You guys can shoot me if you want, but I'm just saying.
We can put you in a burial ground. Not right now, we can't.
It has to be a cemetery.
It's not on the agenda.
Has to be a cemetery, anyway. My point was simply this. It's gonna go in front of town meeting. There's already somebody that's pulled out papers to actually challenge whether it should even exist. Their likelihood that if that doesn't have a special town meeting, still doesn't negate the possibility of it being a petition article. What's the rush here to name it when nothing's happening? Nothing at all is happening until we get to May.
Go ahead, Ed.
Can I speak to that?
Hold on one second.
That's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
So I have been working with a grant company to look at different grant possibilities for this facility that we're trying to create here. And I would like to have a name to put on all of the documents and not keep calling it the pet burial ground. I'm only asking for the name, whether you guys vote for it or not, but I'm just trying to get my paperwork in order, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Miranda Dupuy. I'm a member of First Congregational Church, and they also have a memorial garden. That's where my children's grandmother is buried. So I don't think that this is, I think this is gonna cause confusion for the pet cemetery to also be called Harwich Memorial Garden.
That's what the, the name of the.
Yeah, that's where they have the ashes. That was the whole.
Oh, yeah, right, yep, yeah. Okay, it's the same name? Don?
Yeah, and the, and the final thought is, what point does anybody recall anybody approving this as a walking park? That's part of the title. I just get the feeling that if we approve that, that's gonna say that the Board of Selectmen approved it as a walking park too.
And the other? Ed, sorry, Ed.
Chris, when we got a legal opinion.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Chris, when we got a legal opinion on this, didn't John Giorgio say explicitly in his legal opinion that we can sell plots in that, and that money could go towards, right now, we could sell a plot in that pet burial ground?
Yes, he did.
And that money can be used to finish the walks or whatever we use it for?
Yes, he did.
Once we create.
It would be within the general fund, similar to what we did with the, how, with the cultural center.
And then sectioned off after, right.
So now I'm even more confused by what Don says because Don's interpretation is that we can't do anything. And I, I, I think, from what I read, we're all set to go. We just can't spend any other money besides what we generate by burying pets, correct?
Except that we have, yeah, once the money comes in, then, then we have to have the separate fund created.
You, we can actually create within the general fund.
Yeah.
A, a special purpose fund, and we have done that previously.
Right, but then I thought John said also, once we've done that, I mean, then they take control of those money elsewhere, but.
I just got two.
But we, so, go ahead, sorry.
So with that, the, the other, the other piece of this, I guess, to what the resident just said.
Right.
I read that legal document, and I don't think, let me just find this title again, if you don't mind.
This one?
Harwich Memorial Gardens and Walking Park. That is not the name of what's at the congregational church. That was in no material. Do they have a memorial?
Could you go up to the microphone, sorry?
It's, it's referred to as the Memorial Gardens.
They have a memorial garden, but they don't have a memorial garden named, and that wasn't part of it.
Oh, my goodness. Well, maybe they don't, but I just do see a confusion. Shouldn't pet be in the name?
I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted, because I think you put some confusion out there because that's not the name.
I, 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 that's what, that's what the congregation refers to it as.
Okay.
Let's all go out to the memorial garden and, you know.
And then, and then lastly, I think to Don's point, before there's any confusion, as Robin said, she'd like a name to tie this to. The Cemetery Commission, the commission that we put together and point people, came up with this, and they're before us to name it. And it is a memorial garden. That's what we're trying to create, and people are going to walk there. So I, I don't, there's no confusion with me, and a resident can walk in there whether they have a pet in there or not. So I, I'm not sure what the confusion here is.
Well, maybe to that point, though, that's just been raised, is maybe it should be Harwich Pet Memorial Gardens and Walking Park. Just a thought. I don't know, you know, if, if we've got something called the Memorial Garden and we do want to differentiate it between.
We can say that. We've been pushing pet cemeteries. Now they say we can't say that, but we can say pet memorial garden.
Pet memorial, why not? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Cindy Eldridge, Commissioner.
Hi, I'm Cindy Eldridge, Commissioner, and I'd like to speak to that if I may. A memorial garden is a burial place, whether it be a pet or a person. I looked that up to be sure. But if you prefer to have pet in the name, we certainly don't have a problem with it.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I move that we...
Hold on one second. Oh, you're going to make a motion?
I'm going to move that we approve the name of the pet burial ground of Harwich Pet Memorial Gardens and Walking Park.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Confirm the appointment of Mark Pulselli as part-time health inspector. Chris?
So, we had a vacancy in the part-time health inspector. Mark Pulselli has been a previous member of our workforce. His private business was picking up, so he left us just to engage in the private business. He doesn't do, he does Title V-type inspections. So, he did apply. He does have an interest in doing this on a part-time basis, and we would like to have him back, particularly with the sewer project and a lot of questions about Title V-related issues or septic sewer issues. Having somebody that has the experience and qualifications he has would be a welcome addition to be back on.
Thank you, Chris. Ed?
I'd like to move to confirm the appointment of Mark Pulselli as a part-time health inspector.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion, Don?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm sure he's going to do a great job. He was already in it twice in the past. But we had this discussion one time in the past about confirmation. It was to remove any doubt. But the way the charter reads, and I've been rethinking this, that any appointments or removals may be overturned only by the affirmative vote of at least four selectmen taking within 14 days of the town administrator's action. I took that to mean that there was kind of a mini probationary period just in case something went wrong during that 14 days. You don't need our confirmation to make the appointment. It would actually have to be a supermajority of the board that would turn it down. So, I don't want anybody to misconstrue this, but I'm not going to vote for it if only because it's waiving the 14-day period rather than just going ahead and making the appointment.
Just, you know, we had this discussion when I first started, and really, the part that I'm trying to avoid is if we were to have somebody come on board, work for 14 days, and if there was an issue and the board was to overturn that, then we're on the hook for unemployment. We're on the hook for quite a bit. So, just giving peace of mind to the employee is really what I've been after since I've been here. And I would just remind this board that, not this board, but previous boards, the previous administrator didn't even bring this. The appointments are just made.
And that's been the intent in previous...
You know, a deliberate process to make sure that there's transparency.
It's basically been an announcement to the board in the form of a motion to make sure we, this comes in front of us. We didn't know quite how to, how you frame that. This is an easy way to frame it.
And I get that, Madam Chair, and I commend him for doing that. But we're essentially pre-waving a period that's been written into the charter. And if we just get around it routinely doing that, then change the charter. I, but I didn't, I made, I'm trying to make sure that everybody understands why I would be voting against it. It's absolutely not against the employee. It's the process. Because we'd be pre-waving a provision of the charter that's pretty explicit.
Well, I mean, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, okay. Michael's abstaining and, and Don's a no. Okay.
3-1-1. And only because of the charter thing, but I think we need to, obviously, we need to address this if this is the practice. And Chris, thank you for bringing it forward.
Right, I mean...
If you don't have to, and this is going to be the conversation on it, then maybe we shouldn't be bringing it forward. So, I commend you for bringing it forward.
I do, too.
But if the charter says what the charter says, then I would just assume you didn't bring it forward. That's, but maybe we warrant another discussion.
Yeah, because...
It's just less transparent.
Thank you.
Right.
Believe me, I thank you for bringing it forward.
Right, and I think that that puts Chris in a difficult position because then if he doesn't bring something forward, then we say, you should have brought it forward. So, it's either a charter change or, you know, we just negate the 14 days. I, yeah, I don't know what the answer is unless we change the charter.
I just, I just want to be clear to the press if they're here. I want to call out that I said thank you to Chris for bringing it forward.
That's, yeah, I know. I noticed that.
I heard you say that.
That's twice.
You got it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
That's a second, but I want to point out that was two this evening.
No good deed goes on.
Larry?
I would suggest that we may not need a charter change. You might want to look at a, you know, a policy of the time that you do it and maybe bring it to us, you know, 10 days afterwards so we have a chance to review it or something of that kind. You know, some time lag if that's a concern.
Then that's after the fact.
Without the whole charter change.
Yeah, it's after the person's hired. It's a matter of having somebody then discharging them within two weeks that I have an issue with. That will have a chilling effect to...
Well, as I said again, it's come up, we discussed before, and we struggle the way to frame this. It's transparent. This is what we're hearing now.
Right, and so that's why the conversation continues, so, okay. Discussion of an appointment of an interim member of the Housing Authority. Michael?
Don, I put this on after our discussion. Do you want to lead this?
Yeah, I mean, the process is, it doesn't go through the interview committee. We'd have to put a legal notice out, and then we'd have to have an interlocking meeting of the Housing Authority and the Board of Selectmen and ask that publicly, and the candidates who show up, show up.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, I would just, you probably want to have the, we can advertise that we have a vacancy and give people a certain amount of time. Generally, we do two weeks. And then see if we can schedule and convene a joint meeting between the remaining members of the Housing Authority and the Board of Selectmen to interview whatever candidates we get. If you want to do that, we can, I can have staff put together that timeline and lay out a process and then hope that we get candidates in a timely fashion.
So, Michael?
That sounds great. John's here tonight from the Housing Authority. John, can you answer, you're down two. You're also down the governor's appointment, or...
Yes, John Stewart, the Housing Authority. Yes, we are down to three members at this point. The state, months ago, I understood was vetting a candidate, but I have never heard anything more about it. So, it's down to the three of us.
So, okay, so you're down two regular members and then...
I'm down one regular member and a state appointee.
Okay.
I just have the three members, just enough for a quorum.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And that was the point. We're really only in a position to do the one appointment because this, just because the governor hasn't made an appointment doesn't mean that he relinquishes his authority to do so.
John?
There are guidelines for that. We have not reached that timeline yet, and when we do, I will notify you in writing.
Thank you. Okay, so Chris, and you'll put that public notice together, the hearing, and advertise, okay. Michael?
Nope.
Oh, sorry. And, "Request for one-day beer and wine license by Friends of the South Harwich Meeting House for October 28, 2018." Michael?
I move that we approve the request for one-day beer and wine license by Friends of the South Harwich Meeting House for October 28, 2018.
From two to five?
What?
From the hours of two to five.
Two to five, hours of two to five.
Sure.
Seconded? Ed seconded it. Okay, so moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Maybe Judith should take this opportunity to tell us again what's going on that day.
Do you want to speak again, Judith?
Is that before or after the children's center? The same day.
I have another chance. This is great. Actually, we're going to have, I didn't say before that the auction is going to be the lower level. The reception level of the meeting house is all going to be set up with a massive silent auction, and we've had a phenomenal response from just about everybody in town. Everything from lumber yards to, you know, hardware stores, restaurants. Everybody under the sun has been hugely supportive, and we're thrilled about this. We're going to have, you know, trips involved. We have a package of two kayaks for going up Herring River, and we have a phenomenal amount of things coming into this auction. So, it'll be a silent auction downstairs and a live auction upstairs, all happening within that three hours. And we're just, we're thrilled to be opening the building for that reason.
Do you want to state the date and the time again?
It's going to be October, Sunday afternoon, October 28, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. And featuring John Terrio as our auctioneer. And we're going to be hitting everybody we can find tomorrow with all kinds of publicity. So, you'll be seeing an awful lot about it. But if anybody wants to pre-ticket sales, which maybe, they may really want to do that in case it's going to get full. It's going to be, for tickets, pre-sale would be southharwichmeetinghouse.ejoinme.org/capitolautumn/.
Great.
And this will be all over, and it'll be in the papers in just about everywhere you go. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Don?
Judy, before you go, we got a discussion later about the West Harwich School building.
You know, I'm not leaving. I'm staying for that. You knew that, Don.
I kind of did, but it's show and tell.
Okay, on to contracts. "The approval of the change order for Sacquetucket Landside Project for paving work done by Lawrence Lynch in the amount of $76,176.32. Vote to authorize the chair to sign." Michael?
I move that we approve the change order for Sacquetucket Landside Project for paving work done by Lawrence Lynch in the amount of $76,176.32.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in fa, oh, Norm?
No, go ahead. I just have a question on...
Go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but on the same topic, I do have a question if you want to take your vote.
Okay, we'll take our vote, and then you can... What?
I did have a comment before we vote.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Madam Chair, I was just wondering, and this just may be a misunderstanding on my part, but on the contracts, just in general, have we agreed or not agreed to have, like, a checklist?
Well, this came back to us from last...
Okay, but I'm just bringing, the reason I'm bringing it up is because we had talked about a process where you want us to agree to a contract and/or a contract amendment. If, then we want a check sheet that shows the finance director's good with it, that the town administrator's recommending it in writing, and that there were various things that we wanted.
Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, and to that, Don, thank you. And the reason I made this snap motion is we did see that last week. There was a mistake putting it on the agenda.
Okay.
And because it was a mistake, we agreed to bring it back this week for a vote.
Right.
But we would normally be doing that.
Yes, well...
Well, yeah, we did. Okay, did you have another question?
No.
All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead, Don.
On this topic, with the construction of Station 2, I just want to bring it out and make sure that, be transparent about how I go forward with change orders on the project. It mentions a contract. We already, you've approved a contract with Mill City for the work. Now, there'll be a change order for the sidewalk. Is it, is it safe to assume that up to the approved dollar amount, I will go through the town administrator, and anything beyond that, I will present them to the board?
Yes, because...
That's the way I've been handling it so far.
And the previous vote to change that amount, though, was not effective till...
Down to $25,000.
Right, but not effective to January 1st, wasn't it? Or was it no, December 1st?
December 1st.
December 1st.
Although you can have a change order that reduces price.
If it reduces the price, then I probably would sign it because it's...
Yeah.
I'm just saying that you might have more available because some change orders result in you cutting something out that will give you more of a balance backing.
So, any change orders will be approved by, whether they're a credit or a deduct, will be approved by the town manager or town administrator, pardon me. And if they exceed the $25,000, I will go through the channels and then it'll be presented here.
Here, exactly.
That's the way I've done all the projects.
Right. Right, so that's the process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mass Works Grant of $36,000 awarded for dredge work. Vote to authorize the chair to approve the town administrator as signatory and sign.
This is just a dredge grant. They want to make sure that the board acknowledges that we've accepted it and that I've authorized the sign, $36,000.
Madam Chair.
Ed?
Move that we accept the grant and authorize the administrator to sign.
Second.
Larry?
Larry seconded that. So, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The contract approval for Brooks Park restroom to Cape Cod builders in the amount of $77,500. Any discussion?
So, this material is in the package. This is a straight bid process. We are in the process of building a restroom over at Brooks Park. It was CPC funded. It's gone through the process. It did come in a little bit tight, but we had $80,000, I believe, allocated, and the bid price came in at $77,500. We left a little bit in there in case we had any unforeseen circumstances that came up. So, I think everything is in place and things have been signed, and would ask for the board to go to approve.
Thank you, Chris. Can I get a motion?
Just one question.
Okay.
And maybe Chris can answer it. If not, maybe Evan can answer it. What contract is this? What number?
It's under 149. It's a building construction.
Building construction, and that is 49?
149.
149. Okay.
Okay. Motion?
Yes, I...
Go ahead, Larry.
Just trying to get the... I move approval of the contract for Brooks Park restroom to the Cape Cod builders in the amount of $77,500.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just have a question. Where is this restroom going?
The restroom?
Yeah.
It's next to the pavilion right across the street.
It's on that side.
Yep.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Old Business MS4 Stormwater Rules and Regulations Summary for Review. This was brought to us previously, and we were given more time to look at the regulations. And does anyone have any comments or questions, concerns? Chris?
So, maybe just to, and I'll make just a brief overview. The board had asked, when does this stormwater kick in? It's a federal requirement that we have to do. I did ask the town engineer, Bob Caffarelli, to put together. I thought he did a nice job of a couple of samples of this. So, basically, any lot that's over an acre that is also part of a subdivision would require this permit. There's several exemptions. I'm not going to go through. But basically, the single-family lot, a single-family lot of any size would not be required. And what this is, is to actually require a local stormwater permit. So, if you're going to disrupt a large area and you're going to have stormwater go off, you can't just shed it off to your neighbor's property. It has to be controlled and go into the, making sure that if it goes into the environment, certain areas, that it does so through a mechanism to remove any of the solids that are in that. And the, actually, the permit is actually issued through the federals, federal government, the NITD's permit, National Pollution, I shouldn't have went there. The permit for stormwater to be able to control that through EPA. So, this would be, and he does have a flow chart, which we have in the materials for when it would be needed versus when it would not be needed. We did not duplicate and put the regulations back in. I think that the request that was made was really, when does it apply? So, we do have the material in there for that purpose.
Anyone have any additional comments, questions?
Only a comment. I had the pleasure of sitting through the stormwater discussion this morning. And Bob made a long presentation, and I guess it was reinforced this morning, and how complicated it was. And this is a side, a part of that. To put together all the paperwork for the notice of intent, that had to be done by October 1st. And then there's about eight or nine steps that have to be done in 18 months. So, it's going to be a big haul. And there's, the county and other people are trying to look for funding help in all the towns. This is water collaborative, so all the towns are looking for that. On a discouraging note, it turns out that since it's a federal requirement, every town across the country has to do this, and obviously, we're in the country, so we have to do it. But it includes the state, not only the towns, because I asked a question about Route 28. But the state's not owning up to doing their, doing it yet. They, and it's not clear there's how much pressure the government, you know, can force the state to, can force the state to... Because they don't wanna spend... A lot of reasons, I guess. But they're lagging behind. And the towns, right now, all fifteen towns on the Cape owned up to their responsibility. The state has not. They'll discourage you.
Well, I think, you know, when you have to go through these design plans, when you have a residence that does have the criteria that requires this, they're pretty comprehensive plans as well.
Yeah.
So, and I mean, they're very common off Cape. I think we just haven't been used to them in the sense that we're not suited.
And probably one thing I would at least... It does require a public hearing. And as the stormwater falls under the same statute as a sewer. So unfortunately, the Board of Selectmen, unfortunately, depending on your viewpoint, I guess, would be the regulatory agency. I would certainly encourage the board to kinda think about where if a developer was coming in, to prevent the developer from having to go to too many different stops, the board could defer some of its authority to the planning board. So when the planning board reviews for other calculations relevant to stormwater and other... For other items relative to drainage, you could ask them, similar to what you do with liquor license violations, to take that onus on. Otherwise, you'd have developers coming in and doing the stormwater calculations at a meeting and walking through that process. So you would always have the authority to delegate to the planning board if you so chose to do so.
And in terms of the process for when somebody has to submit the overall plan as a building project, the building department would then make sure that those criteria are being met through the planning board as well?
And through the town engineer to make sure that the calculations are...
Meetings with both. Well, and I suppose that planning board would have already issued a letter, so... To say that they've reviewed the plan and everything meets its... Any further discussion?
Just it's a complex project. And this guy called us on short term. And the county is putting together or promised to put together an educational program to try to...
Yeah, it's a lot.
To explain it, but in a lot of... To the public much better than it's being explained now.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, Ed?
At the beginning of the document you gave us, it goes, "These regulations do not apply to a single-family lot of any size."
Over a certain... I think you said over a certain...
It doesn't apply to any single-family lot, period, unless it was part of a subdivision.
Right.
Okay, so...
So if somebody had a five-acre lot that was A and R, approval not required, it would not... They would not have to do the calculations.
Have to do it, right.
And they could discharge as much water off their site as they wanted to without... I mean, you know, we have this problem in neighborhoods all the time of somebody doing a landscaping improvement in their yard and all of a sudden, the neighbor next door is having their basement flooded.
Right.
No.
I think we're just trying to comply with the requirements of the federal rule and that's what the requirements are.
Okay. Well, there's, you know, especially in West Harwich, on Depot Street, there are a number of residents there that when, during the winter, when it's raining, wind up with their basements flooded because of somebody else in the neighborhood pumping out their basement into the street.
I recall the issue last week.
Yeah. And it's a situation that really we need to do... Find something to be done about it. Because it's simply unacceptable that people are told that... They just oughta not put anything in their basement or get a bigger pump as the only recourse.
Yeah, no, it's a true concern. And I mean, that is a topic to be addressed. And maybe we should bring that back for further discussion. I'll go to, I guess, the water department or...
That's right.
I would think the planning department would be the one that would be the first look at that.
Well, I don't know how they... What... I mean, if you haven't gone to the planning board and you just happen to...
Just do it, yeah.
Right? So, I mean, who would be the... If you didn't have a new project and you were not in front of the planning board and you're facing that issue, who can we look to to look at how to regulate? Would that be the water department?
Well, I think in terms of the one incident that we had last year, it was a groundwater issue.
Yeah.
And they had no penetrations of their basement. And they decided to put in a sub-pump. And when you put in a sub-pump pit in an area where the groundwater level is high,
Okay, yeah.
it actually, by cutting a hole in the basement, they created a problem for themselves.
Problem, right. Okay.
So, this one, I think the regulation behind this is more stormwater as it goes into a...
Body of water.
A body of water. And so we'd have to look at it. I think in general, if people wanna do that kind of work, certainly, I think, you know, they could contact fire department or the water department to at least get some advice or, you know, more likely probably just get a professional engineer to maybe look if you're gonna propose something to see what ramifications you're gonna have.
Have, right, right, okay. All right, any further discussion? Did we get a motion on this?
I move that we approve the MS Four Stormwater Rules and Regulations.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just one comment. Chris, as far as delegating our authority, that can come back when this all goes into...
Absolutely.
West Harwich School Building, general discussion. Larry, you had asked...
Well, I did several weeks ago. Because it came to my attention, I think probably through actually a Facebook blog, that we haven't done anything with that building for a couple of years. And, you know, it's... With no intention, it's gonna fall down. And so I brought it back because I think... I know we keep discussing it, but we should... Not to be too harsh on it, but we need to make a decision whether we do something protective and push harder for it or let it fall down. But we have some people in the audience that have some interest in it as well. Maybe let them speak.
But, Chris? Madam Chair, I just really three things that I would like to kinda bring up. First is, I was requested on the language of the application that was submitted and we did receive that material. So it does appear to be a designation. And if the selectmen want to keep that historic designation, we could do that. I don't believe from reading through the material that there were any prohibitions necessarily. It was almost kind of a voluntary designation. But I will make sure that... I don't know if the material I got specifically is in the package. I'll double-check to make sure that that is in there. Second...
Before you leave that, Chris, if I may, I think that selling others has nominated this for a... Get the language. Preservation. And there's no money involved. There's actually no commitment from the town either. You know, what... If we won this... If we're nominated, we won their wars, I understand it. This group, Preservation Something, would provide us some collaborative support and some ideas on what we wanna do with the building. So it's supportive. It's not obligating us to money or anything. So I think that's one of the things we wanna discuss tonight. Should we go ahead and... Because the application you read through, it leaves that part that is not supported by the town. And this is a pretty simple nomination, just to ask for someone to come in and help us look at it.
Well, and I think...
Just to kind of finish that thought.
Yeah.
We do get... We do have the letter. James Igoe is the executive director. We've exchanged phone calls, but we missed each other just to kinda confirm that. So that's all we're trying to... At least I'm trying to do, Larry, is just confirm that there's no stipulations that are attached to it.
If we win it, we get some help.
Yep.
Right.
There's two other points that I wanted to bring up. You know, I have, in the time I've been here, put on in the capital plan for demolition just to get a discussion started. And, you know, I don't feel comfortable coming back again with just the demolition. So, you know, if there are concepts that the board would like me to pursue, you know, I'm happy to pursue. So I would like, I guess, and I've said this before, I think a couple of meetings ago, trying to look for some direction of what would the board like to see. There is a third factor that has just recently emerged. And we had, at one point, two buildings that were vacant. Now, the South Harwich Meeting House is done and operational, so that's off the vacant building coverage. However, this building has not had any work done to it. And we do have a letter from our insurance company that provides the vacant building coverage that is looking for some minimal work to be done. So I have sent that material. Actually, Evan got the material. We've sent it down to Sean Libby to put together. As people can imagine, trying to secure the building, kind of making sure the windows are blocked up, making sure that some of the roof shingles are secure to keep it as weather-tight as we can. They're looking for bushes and stuff to be moved away. Actually, five years ago, I think when I started, I did ask to clean it up because just visually, you could see it better to prevent vandalism. But we probably need to go back and do a little bit more. But we do have a couple of things that they're looking. I don't think there's hundreds of thousands of dollars in there. But they are looking for us to do a little bit of work in order to continue to have the vacant building coverage extended.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just speaking from my own perspective, you demolish a building, it's forever. It's not coming back. And that's kind of why I asked Judy to stick around. We spent a lot of time worrying about the South Harwich Meeting House, which was the old South Harwich Methodist Church that was sold to the town. We don't have any money, that's true. And our budget message says we don't have any money. But I would really like to go down fighting on this. And frankly, the model that I would love the CSU's is the same one that was used on the South Harwich Meeting House, which was a licensing agreement that it basically empowered people without having to worry about prevailing wage and other stuff. It empowered people to be able to do some work on the thing that could show progress to the insurer and actually not cost the town any money and then bring this thing back to inventory. Because there's fewer and fewer of these village-based one-room school buildings on Cape Cod. And when they're gone, they are gone.
Ed?
Yeah, it's, you know, I've... This building has been of concern to me as long as I... Well, I mean...
Well, you've written several RFPs.
Yeah. Of... And the problem is, you know, the town, over the years, have let it fall to such horrendous shape that the reach to bring it back up is so great that it's just beyond the ability of any potential nonprofit agency to effectuate. And so, you know, it's... If it's going to happen, it needs to be done, I think, with some town investment. And it's true, we don't have a whole lot of tax resources, revenues at our disposal. But I think the town itself could prepare a limited rehabilitation plan for the building to get it to the point where it may not meet every code, but it is at least in a more usable condition with windows that let in light and some electricity that works and water that works. And get it to a point where it would be within the realm of some or any number of potential nonprofits or other organizations to take a look at it and make a go of it. And, you know, that program that should be put together, I think, to sort of bring it back to sort of a minimum... Minimum level could be done, I think, through an application to the community preservation funds. You know, this is obviously a historic building. It's obviously in need of restoration. And I think we should move ahead with that.
Thank you, Ed. Larry or Michael, do you have any?
Well, Don had me at not costing the town any money. Ed lost me at a limited amount of money. So my, you know, Chris, can I test? We've talked about this building for as long as I've been on the board, which is a short time. At this point, I think we're at a point in town that we need to start thinking of need and not want. And I think that this is a want, not a need. Sure, preserving another old school sounds great. But I think that the taxpayers have not realized how much money they're gonna go up with the fire department, the tech school, the harbor, the wastewater project. And for me, it's about need, not want. I won't support costing the town any money.
Larry?
Well, my push tonight is really two items. One was, I'd like to have the board support the nomination and see if this collaborative gives us any ideas. You know, it's in front. We've had to black out and say that, you know, there's... We... The town is not supporting this nomination. I think we should support it, see if these people have any ideas. The second thing I'd push for, kind of to round this off, is that we keep talking about this. And whether we can afford it or not, we need to get this done in a few months. We can't wait another year, two years, three years to make a decision on it. You know, either we come up with an action plan, we got people that are working on it. And we don't have a lot of money in town, maybe none. But we need to come... We need to make a decision. We can't sit here forever and let it fall apart. I think if this preservation group can give us some ideas, we should push for that. Maybe that helps us out. And we give ourselves a timeframe, maybe it's six months. It wouldn't be a long timeframe to make a decision on where we go.
Well, I think part of that discussion, though, comes back to two things. First of all, what we've got on here in terms of general discussion. But also, which Sally put a lot of time and effort into the application she filed, but, you know, that wasn't done through the board. That was done and then brought to the board. So I don't even recall. I know Sally got some... The zip file over to Chris and I. I don't know that the rest of the board has even had an opportunity to review that whole application. Has everybody? I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think...
I don't think so.
I know it came in.
I got it, but it's so many files. I read one. I read a couple of them.
Right. So, I mean, first of all...
I don't think we scanned it for the full file.
I don't either, because there was a lot of materials. So, first of all, the board would need to look at that application before they can support it because they haven't really seen it.
We can bring it back. I'm just saying we have to make a... We should move towards a specific actions.
Right, so not no action tonight, but to have a decision.
Maybe next meeting.
And have further discussion, right. But I think in that regard, bringing it back, you know, it's... We need to be more specific, obviously, in the agenda item. And the board needs an opportunity to review all that information and go back and look at previous discussions, too. So I would ask that we put all that information in the packet for the board to discuss. And we'll bring it back. I probably... You know, we've got a couple of meetings that are pretty packed. So I think the timeframe on that's gonna be at least probably three weeks at least. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so that Michael can go home and sleep calmly tonight. The idea of the licensing agreement really does presuppose no outline from the town because one of the things that happened with that, we went through a whole bunch of the same types of discussions with the South Harwich Meeting House. In granting the license, it provides whoever has that license with the standing to go out and secure grants. Without the license, they have no standing. It's not their asset. It's not their building. So at a minimum, to be able to do... To agree to the grant application and this application and to allow them some time to go forward, I don't see that that's problematic. Because again, the alternative is completely final because there's no further discussion. You tear it down, you move on, and it's a... You got an empty lot there. But I'm not really looking... Much as I agree with some of what Ed said, I'm not really looking for the town to spend money because we don't have it. I just wanna try to clear the path so that these guys can do what they wanna do as a passion. And if they can't put it together, if they can't pull together different people to join with them and go out and secure grants, it'd be readily apparent and then we played it all out.
Yeah. Just to be clear, though, I do believe that we're CPC funds awarded and are they still held and I think that, right? There were CPC funds.
Actually, as I remember, there were...
For windows.
Money that was set aside for windows, but that did revert back.
Oh, did it revert? Okay, I'm sorry. Michael?
And Don, just to your point, we did go out with an RFP for any and all ideas and got no response after the failed attempt at town meeting. So this has been visited over and over and over again. So if you're aware of somebody that wants a licensing agreement, So, if you're aware of somebody that wants a licensing agreement, then that should be part of the next conversation. And then, secondly, the designation, and Chris, this is a question for you, before I support any designation done by a resident. Is that binding in any way to keeping that building? And I'd want Legal to weigh in on that before we, as a board, vote to accept the designation and then have to have that and have the insurance company force us to put money into a building that we may not want to. So, I'd like to know if the designation is binding in any way at all.
Yeah, that's where I've exchanged phone calls, but I haven't had a chance to talk to the executive director of this organization. But we'll put it in the packet.
Ed?
Well, you know, Don talks about doing a licensing agreement, which we did with the South Harwich Meeting House. But there was a lot of quote "town funds" that went into the Meeting House in the...
CPC funds.
Through CPC funds. And that's, you know, in what I was saying, that was the model I wanted to follow. But in the absence of having a licensee come forward to make that application, it, quite honestly, the town could. I mean, town does this all the time with the Park and Recreation Commission making application for projects to use CPC grant funds.
Sally?
Madam Chair, gentlemen, thank you for this discussion because I think it's important. A couple of clarifications. Designation through Preservation Massachusetts is only that it gets put on the most endangered list of Massachusetts properties. It's already designated as historic asset. So, there's a little bit of a distinction there. And also, CPC doesn't close till October 15th. So, we could still get a roof if somebody from the town wanted to put in a CPC project for this year.
Thank you, Sally. Richard?
Sally stole my thunder. With CPC still open, if you have a list from the insurance company, vacant property insurance rates are ridiculous. I don't know what we're paying currently for that particular building as a vacant building. But if you have requirements right now from the insurance company, can't we at least fund that through CPC without having to use town funds?
We could certainly put together an application and see. We just got the material from the insurance company within a week or two. I mean, it hasn't been very long time.
So, if you did minimum standards to meet the requirements of the insurance company as a CPC filing, then you're not going to have to touch any funds. Mr. McGask will be very happy at that. Well, no. Try and, Michael. But the bottom line is that we preserve the building. But it's going to cost us a lot more in insurance if we don't meet the minimum standards of the insurance company. And we don't want to lose the insurance for an asset for the town.
Thank you, Richard. Michael?
So, just backwards, because Sally brought up an interesting point, which was great. But I still want to make sure the designation, I get that it's a historic building. I want to make sure the designation doesn't lock us in. And to Richard Waystack's point, excellent, we can apply for CPC funds. Once we do, and once we put the money into the building, we're pretty much locking ourselves into doing something with it. So, this board needs to make a decision and not just file a CPC application to get us part of the way there so that we end up having to be there, in my mind.
Good evening.
Good evening, Duncan Berry. I'm a resident of West Harwich, 37 Main Street. And I just wanted to, first of all, say how encouraging it is to see a change of tone in the Board of Selectmen over the course of the last five years, where there was a lot of adversity to begin with. And now it seems to be not unanimous, but there's certainly a kind of a mood of, or consensus of interest and concern for it. I just wanted to put in, put out there that, in the context of what we're looking at, remember, too, that MassDOT is redoing the west end of 28 from the Dennis Portline Division Street all the way across into over the Herring River. And if you're familiar with it, they've been involved with us, the folks at, in Captain's Row, to kind of see what did it used to be, what does it look like, what do we want it to look like? And they're talking about a rather substantial investment in all of the various gradients of handling the curbs, you know, brick areas, walkways across the street. And when you begin to see this kind of from a bird's eye view, you see there's a terrific hole here. And the schoolhouse is the apex, the top of that arch of 28. And we think, you know, personally, I think, as somebody who's interested in history and has a family investment and everything, but if you step back, I think one of the great things about this little area in the school in particular is that there are all these players who have been on the national stage, from, you know, entrepreneurs to sea captains, to emissaries of presidents and intimates of, you know, the big names around the turn of the century and throughout the 20th century. You know, these guys are from West Harwich, you know, people that hung out with Teddy Roosevelt and went on secret missions for Woodrow Wilson. And they're all there, all the stuff is there. The stuff at the Historical Society, they'd love to have a satellite out there. You know, there was talk about having it as a kind of a welcomes area. There was a certain amount of glamour back then, let's say, 100 years ago. And it's all the stuff, the material is there. It's just a matter of brushing it away, buffing it up a little bit. And, you know, again, there's, one of the things that we haven't talked about is, and we did about four years ago, is talking about the possibility of selling it to a nonprofit or what have you, and detaching so that it isn't a worry, that you can, like, discharge your duty to it, to, let's say, a private developer that can probably work with, you know, with a preservation orientation, maybe a stipulation, to keep that there. And as part of this larger multimillion dollar project that's going to be invested in there anyway, why not leverage that somehow, either privately or publicly? But, you know, I raise my hand, you guys want to talk? I'm there, I live there, I think about this all the time. I have generations of family that went, I've got pictures of my grandfather in there, all this stuff. It's a living thing to me. You know, it's like, there are a lot of us who have family that have been there for a long time, and we love this. We love the idea that when you walk up to it, from the church, which is the oldest continuously operated Baptist community in Harwich in the 1750s, all the way through, you know, the civic lesson you get from the cemetery stones, like the guys that fought in the French and Indian War and the Battle of 1812. Not too many people on the Cape fought in the Battle of 1812. You know, Civil War, World War I, World War II, you know, it's a bonanza. But it's hard to see because we're going by it 35 miles an hour, it's a little bit off, but it's there. So, I'm happy to help, I'm happy to talk offline, you know, whatever. So, put my little pin in the ground and in the map and let me, you know, let's talk. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Do you want to address Miranda Dupuy again? I have some experience in historic preservation, economic development. This has been done in many, many historic areas across the country. There is federal money, there is private money. When you have a designation of a building, but more so a district, you generate income, and there are a lot of different federal programs, and again, a lot of private ones. But also, the schoolhouse, every historic district is supposed to have, supposed to have, an anchor building. And I think that the schoolhouse could be that anchor building. And, you know, using that as the means by which the community is energized and the money is, you know, the grants are requested and returned to the larger community. I do also want to say, I think that the West Harwich community really wants this. And possibly, you know, just stepping back a little bit and saying, okay, we've, we as Harwich in general have ideas. But if they really want it, isn't it appropriate to say, let's give it a try? That's what I'm trying to say, rather than looking at this as a whole Harwich issue. Let's let them try.
Thank you. Go ahead, Judy.
Yes, Judith Ford, I just wanted to make a few comments. Having been through the long route with the South Harwich Meeting House from the days when it was absolutely a total disaster and everyone said it was a failure and there was no point in trying to save it. I've seen what can happen with a little vision and a little creativity, and not necessarily a lot of money for, actually, in our case, for a long time. It was a long time before we even went and applied for CPC funding. But it is very important, I think, to try to find a group that will come in and promote the building. Because that's the key, really, is to find it, get a nonprofit, or have maybe the people in West Harwich to get a nonprofit together and then come in with a plan and go under the building like we did and look at it and find out that, when everyone says it's going to fall down, usually I find with the Meeting House, they said that was going to fall down. When you went under there, it was probably structurally a thousand times better than modern buildings today. It's phenomenal, the structure of those old post and beam buildings. And I think that to have some vision and some creativity, I mean, there's even a possibility of picking the building up and moving it to a different place. But you can stabilize it, and I think that's the key here, is to, if there's hope for the building and you can find a group that wants to promote it, stabilize the building. I know I happened to go by there one day and went circling around. And very much like the Meeting House, I'm sure, where we had raccoons and birds and God knows what else in there, that's completely open on the foundation level, it's just open to anything. And that renders it almost impossible to try to save later if that goes too long. But it is definitely possible to find funding, I would think, with a group that came forward and promoted that, to get a roof on it, close in the bottom, do the windows, and then gradually work your way inside. But it can be done, I think the Meeting House is a classic example of what can really, really work, a little crazy, but definitely worth it all day long. And now that the town will be involved at the Meeting House, they'll be able to see how easy it is to say, well, it's an old building, we should rip it down, it's no good, you know, it's a weight on the tax dollars. But if you get a town, a town group or a local group to promote it, you can save having it be a town expense, and you can go forward. And even if it's gradual, eventually you'll get there with the building. And it's, the old buildings are not coming back. Don's right, when they're gone, they're gone. And I see West Harwich with Bishop's Terrace and with the schoolhouse and with the building next to the church and the church itself that should be on the National Register. All those buildings in that area are becoming severely at risk. And it's a terrible shame for the town, and you don't get them back. But we have developed a tremendous amount of expertise on the Meeting House that we would love to share. And we think that would be a great help in that project, which is really very similar. But thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Judy. Don?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to clarify something Judy said, though. You didn't have this juggernaut organization that had 501(c)(3) and you were just shopping for a building when you went to the South Harwich. What we need is, get out there to the general public, is if you have an affinity for this and you really want to save part of Harwich's heritage, get together and then you can get a 501(c)(3) designation. It doesn't have to be a pre-existing charitable.
Judy, can you just stand up? Sorry.
Actually, when we started, five of us got together and met at the Stewed Tomato at the time and talked about what we were going to do. And it took us two, actually, which is an important point for the Board of Selectmen, maybe, as Don Hall will remember, it took two and a half years for us to talk the town into letting us start. Later on, they were saying, why isn't it done? But it took two and a half years to get it under agreement with the town. And basically, we developed a 501(c)(3) immediately. I think we were actually recognized in 2003 or '04 at that point. And that is important right away, and then to go forward from there. But I think the support from the town is important. And I think if a group can get the impetus and the energy to go forward with it, I think the town begins to follow, and the town residents begin to follow as well.
Thank you, Judy. Michael?
Judy, thank you. Duncan, thank you for your comments, I thought they were great, public, private, sounds excellent. Chris, the last RFP we issued, we have no, we got no responses. And that included everything that we're talking about right now. Can we, as a board, just reissue that RFP? And see if anything, if this group comes back forward with any answer to it and give us a conversation point? As the chair said, it's going to be a month before we can talk about it again, anyway. So, why not put the RFP out and see what they come back with?
Well, and I do believe that the RFP included, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we also talked about if we couldn't get anybody, in terms of that, we'd even be willing to relocate the building.
Right. And then one more on that. I just wanted to get clarification, Miranda, thank you for your comments also. You mentioned every district has a cornerstone, historic district?
No, every successful economic development of a historic area has a, what's called, an anchor building. It's just, it's just, it's just commonly what people do in the field.
No, and I agree, I just heard the word district, and I wanted to be clear that that's not a district at this point.
It's not a district at this point, but there's no reason why it can't be a National Register district. And that would not involve town, it would not involve the Historic District Commission, you know, HDHC. That could be done by the community itself, or by anyone, actually.
Thank you, thanks for the clarification.
Sally, can I ask you a question on that? Didn't, wasn't there a movement, was there any filing? I remember that discussion a while back about making it a historic district. Where is that?
Right, no, so, you have to first, to become a National Register first, you have to apply to MassHistoric, which we did. They came down with Sarah Kordov, they made a visit, they walked the site. They were shocked at how wonderful an area it was, really. They wanted us to make it larger. And they said, yes, now you can be a National Register district. So, we've actually been approved, except that we have to, I was seeking funding to submit that, and I haven't found it. So, we've had a person with advanced degrees in preservation who contacted MassHistoric. They see the critical crunch as what's happening there, and they're going to work with us directly to try and do it ourselves.
Okay, great, thank you for that.
And one thing about your RFP, could we, could we get the results back from Preservation Massachusetts first before the RFP would be issued?
On your application that you...
On this RFP that you're talking about, right. Could we hear from Preservation Massachusetts first before the RFP is put out?
Okay.
I think we should probably dig up the RFP and just take a review of it. It's been, it's been a little bit of time that's gone by.
Michael?
And just Sally, could you clarify what you're talking about? Are you talking about the designation that we just got? Or are we talking about the second part of it, the historic district part of it?
No.
While we wait, you said we should wait until we get...
Oh, yes, you were mentioning putting out the RFP and see if anything comes from it. I'm asking, couldn't we wait until we hear from Preservation Massachusetts first? Because they will give us, they can give ideas as to best use for that particular building in that particular area with the sites for stabilizing that area and for economic development.
So, you could possibly get feedback on that to incorporate into anything?
That's right, that's right.
Yep. Larry?
Well, that brings me back to where I started. Let's bring this back, I'd like to bring this back next meeting, after Michael makes a good point. Have legal counsel look at it, be sure it doesn't bind us anything. Because I think it'd be nice for us to add our support, to have this nomination accepted so we get some help from this Preservation of Massachusetts.
So, yeah, in terms of, I don't know if we can bring it back next week, so we'll have to look at that. I think that we might be able to, well, the 18th...
Is their deadline.
And we're going a lot of different directions.
I know, so we need to kind of clarify, of course, here, so...
Because I think if we're going to do a CPC application to stabilize, it needs to be done pretty quickly.
Right.
But yet, do we want to do?
Yeah, I think we're talking...
The 15th is Monday.
Yeah. I'm looking at two different items, I'm looking at the nomination, you get this support for that, the CPC is...
I know, but our meeting is Monday, is my point, is so there's a CPC application due on Monday. Our meeting is Monday, and so there's a bunch of different deadlines here that we need to cohesively think of. Ed, did you have a comment?
Well, the Preservation Massachusetts, is there a deadline on...
Well, it's already been submitted. So, it was submitted, and there was a deadline, and that was the urgency in getting it done and submitting it. And the reason that everybody didn't get the packet is because my computer crashed and I couldn't access it, and I had to go to her. And so, I sent it to Chris and I think maybe Larry, and then I thought it would be distributed. So, it was not, I didn't mean to overlook any of it. But it's already, and they should be, they send it across Massachusetts and they deliberated on it. So, we should be hearing pretty soon as to whether we're accepted to...
Okay, so our action would just be supportive?
Nice. Yes, that's right, that's correct, it would be lovely.
Okay. And the deadline on the CPC would be Monday?
I think it's the 18th or Monday.
The 15th, I thought.
It's, I think you're right, the 15th, Monday.
I think it's the 15th, which is Monday. So, you know, that's, the point is that we're going in a couple of different directions, as Chris said. So, in terms of support, going back to the question you raised earlier, the support, you know, in terms of the board giving that support, the only thing I'm saying is that the entire board doesn't have the information and they need to look at that. So, that's that part of it. It's not that you're not getting support, it's that the board needs to be able to look at that information. In terms of the CPC, that's the next question, and that's the next, the deadline is Monday. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to clarify how we got to where we got with the South Harwich Meeting House. Just for those people who weren't paying attention, there were four or five people in blue jeans who decided to get together... in blue jeans who decided to get together in the middle of town to talk about, well, what can we do to save this thing? It was not bureaucratic, there was no RFP, it wasn't the result of an RFP. The conversation essentially wound up eventually coming between me, the town administrator, and Judy to talk about how we could hammer out a licensing agreement as an alternative to an RFP. There wasn't any thought that some formed group would just, you know, materialize and take over the building, which is why you didn't get a response to your RFP, aside from the fact it was also issued during one of the two worst economic periods of time in the last hundred years. It's hard to picture how anybody was going to try to get together with a charitable endeavor to pour money into a building when people were losing their own houses. So I would be all in favor of revisiting how you're doing it, because I don't think the RFP route is the right way to go.
Michael?
I just want clarification, if that's all right.
That's fine.
What was the worst economic time when everyone was losing their houses? Last year, when we put the RFP out?
The RFP was only like two years ago.
Two years ago, but that was-
It wasn't, we did one last year.
No, I think it was a year and a half ago, so, but, I mean, it wasn't-
I wasn't on the board, so it couldn't have been last year.
It wasn't during the crash.
Okay.
Just to be clear.
It was coming out of it.
Ed?
So with this group, Preservation Massachusetts, for us to approve a letter of support to be sent, if we did it next Monday, the outstanding question seems to be whether there's anything in-
Legal problem.
That becomes legally binding on the towns. If we could get somebody to review that and make a judgment on that, I'd, you know, quite honestly, I'm not entirely sure. I need to look through every word in the files that have been put together, but that question, I think, should be answered before.
Yeah, and again, I don't think that's a problem in the sense that we, there's not a deadline on that. So we, you know, even getting the feedback from council is not necessarily due by Monday because that doesn't affect our application. It's really the CPC deadline, which is the 15th.
Okay. Madam Chair, what would be the harm? I mean, if we're buying time, to put together something that would button down the building, like the shingles on the roof, say. We presented the CPC, they've got a deliberation period of time, and as we've seen, because we're talking about the windows and about how the money was swiped back, if you don't actually do a project ultimately, they monitor that.
Mm-hmm.
And they're going to withdraw the money. But what would be the harm, since we know we've got a hard deadline in front of us, to go make that submission for next week and with, under the assumption that we're going to further explore what our obligations are with legal counsel? You can always withdraw it, but we can't get back in there, I mean, they've got their deadline. So, I mean-
That's okay, the deadline is the deadline.
As a fixed thought, or as a practical thought, why is there a problem with us backing, having a submission by the town to put a roof on the thing and just get it into the CPC as a placeholder?
Michael?
Well, my thought the harm would be that there's no mention of anything to do with CPC and voting on applications and supporting anything, nor do we have any supporting documents. How are we going to vote on that tonight?
It's not, well, that was my original point, which was, this is a general discussion. So now we're talking about going into particulars that weren't on our agenda, which causes a problem for us. So I originally said that, and also the fact that even though I, and I appreciate what you're saying, Ed, but, you know, in terms of the board having the information, every member of the board should have it if they want it. So there's that piece of it. And, hold on one second, Sally. And the question is then, again, the third issue is the CPC. So we kind of have three different things going on here, and so we have to bring this back for the various discussions that we've just addressed. My problem is, I mean, you know, Monday, certainly we can put it on the agenda for Monday, you know, be prepared that there's other items on there. I mean, I think that that's doable, but then the question is the CPC funds, and so where do you want to go with that? We cannot, we do not have an application to look at right now, we don't have the materials, and we don't have it advertised on our agenda. So I think we're kind of crippled here.
Not at all.
Okay.
We could post for Friday with a single subject to agree to the application for the CPC and walk out of the room, and that would be the only action.
Well, don't we have to post for-
Forty-eight hours.
That's the last, my last point on the same thing.
Michael?
You know, where were we all a month ago when Chris asked us if we wanted to put together any CPC applications? And just because this was brought up tonight, all of a sudden, we're going to have a special meeting on Friday? Don't you think this requires a little bit of thought rather than just a basic discussion and then bringing it back? And I won't be here Friday, I'll be in South Carolina.
Well, you know, we don't, we wouldn't actually have to do it on Friday if we did it at the beginning of the meeting on Monday. It could be, you know, if we decided to move ahead with it, we'd move ahead with it, and if we decide not to, you know.
Madam Chair, just to maybe end this, you know, I don't know if I'm going to be able to get Sean Libby to get all this paperwork together. CPC wants to have things, you know, pretty nailed down to take consideration. I think that we do, you know, we do have some funds for making kind of repairs to buildings, we consolidated, did facility maintenance, so I think we could do the temporary repairs to retain the insurance coverage. They gave us 45 days to put together a plan and to buy a little bit more time for the board to decide.
Right.
And then we'll gear up for CPC cycle next year, once that the purpose of what we're doing makes more sense. But I wouldn't try to rush this because for him to go and get estimates to address this work-
Right.
And do all this in 72 hours is just not, not really realistic.
Right. And so-
But we'll address the immediate concerns, I mean, I'm confident that we can do that just minimally, just to make sure, make sure we can maintain insurance coverage.
I think that's the best avenue for us, because it gives everybody a little bit more time to organize all the pieces, and then ultimately gives feedback on the application, and we go from there. Sally?
One thing I wanted to try and explain more clearly, this is an honorarium, so if we get selected, you know, we have one of the worst buildings in the state of Massachusetts, and they will help us come up with some ideas. But there's, you know, you can read on their website, there's no legal precedent at all, you might save some money by not having to go to town council, it's just an honorarium, essentially.
Okay. We can look at that, too, because we don't, we won't be time-pressed for that answer as well, so, thank you, Sally. Michael?
I would just ask that the town administrator get back to us with-
I'll check, just for due diligence.
And then lastly, if you could, because of the depth of this packet, if I could get it before Thursday, so if it's obviously from Monday night, if it's not going to be on, could I get the material from staff? I have it Thursday night, Friday, or Saturday, whenever the packet ends up.
When you say material, the RFP?
The application that we had, and RFP, whatever we're going to talk about, it's a large packet.
Yeah, I think, I think that you, and I think that, I'm just saying, because if I recall correctly, it might be better to give everybody a USB with it on it, because to Larry's point, and I got it, too, and I couldn't open-
I did, I was able to save it on my own stick and open them all.
Okay, so I think a USB is probably a best bet, so.
I would, if I, if I may, I know, I know Monday's going to be-
That's why you couldn't open a file.
Oh.
A bear.
Sorry.
I know Monday's tight, but I do disagree some that if we're trying to support this after this nomination of honorarium, and that's already been submitted, then I would argue timing is in essence because we're reviewing it. So if we get a legal opinion, that's okay, I think that would be a very brief discussion on Monday, and we could, we could send a supportive letter before they make their decision. I think timing is critical on that one. If we want to be considered, we could weigh in.
Well, if we can get all those-
We'll send the material tomorrow to John Giorgio and try to get an opinion for Monday.
Okay.
And then have the files available for everybody to be able to look at, so. Okay, so I think we'll bring it back on Monday. Hopefully, everybody will have read it.
I can take a crack at emailing the files, because I do have them on a disk, I'll be able to download them.
Okay.
I'll do that.
If you can do that.
That'll be okay, if I'm being, don't respond back, don't talk to me.
Okay. All right. Pleasant Bay Alliance Watershed Permit Implementation Grant concur with the SNEP grant agreement and place an article in the 2019 ATM Annual Town Meeting warrant to appropriate Harwich's share in the amount of $26,710.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Carol Ridley, Coordinator for the Pleasant Bay Alliance. And as you may recall, last year at town meeting, town meeting authorized the board to enter into an intermunicipal agreement to seek a watershed permit for Pleasant Bay, along with the three other towns, Chatham, Brewster, and Orleans. And so the good news is, the application went in, the Massachusetts EP issued the first of its kind permit to the four watershed towns. We also, as you may recall, right around that time, prepared an application for the US EPA's Southeast New England Estuaries Program Watershed Grants. And the purpose of our application was to seek funds that would help us with some of the implementation activities that were identified for the first five years of the watershed permit. And so we were fortunate enough to be named a grant recipient in the amount of $250,000. And the grant, the activities funded under the grant are developing a framework for onsite denitrification septic systems, also an implementation framework for shellfish aquaculture for nitrogen removal, developing a nitrogen trading pilot project, and updating the water use and nitrogen loading portions of the Massachusetts Estuaries Project Linked Model to be able to more accurately assess all of the measures that our member towns are implementing to remove nitrogen from Pleasant Bay, and then in some other public outreach tasks. So as you may recall, when we submitted the grant, you provided a letter of financial commitment, which was a requirement of the submission, as did the other towns, that spelled out the in-kind contributions and your willingness to put together a warrant article to seek the only cash requirement that we asked of you, which was a share of the cash requirement for match for the updating of the water use and nitrogen loading portions of the estuaries project model. And for, so the total amount of that task is $218,000. We are receiving $73,000 from the SNEP grant for a balance of $145,390, which, when apportioned according to the percentages in the memorandum of agreement for the alliance, means that Harwich's share would be $26,710. So the two actions that we need to take, first, we have not yet executed the grant agreement, that would actually formally be executed by the town of Chatham's Finance Director, because Chatham, under the terms of our MOU, is our fiscal agent. But we have visited with each of our member towns just to make sure you understand the grant agreement, you have any questions, we can address those. So we just want to make sure, first, that you, you know, are comfortable with it, for us to give the okay to Chatham to execute it, and secondly, to request that you put a warrant article on the next annual town meeting for that share of grant match for task number three, the updating of the MEP model.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure.
Chris, did you have anything more you wanted us to know?
She did a great job.
Okay. So if we, can I get a motion?
Larry.
Good job, Carol. I'm not going to add anything more to that.
All right.
I move that we place an article in the 2019 Annual Town Meeting Warrant to appropriate Harwich's share in the amount of $26,710.
In fact-
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
You may want to include in that to also approve the grant for-
Improve the grant.
Chatham to be the fiscal agent.
And call out the grant.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Good enough.
Hi. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You, too. Okay, town administrators' report.
Under the town administrators' report, I do have a couple things. Just on the first one, we did receive a claim for damage to residential property from golf balls being hit from Cranberry Valley. That has been submitted to the insurance company. There was one thing in that that said the town hadn't done anything. The town has taken actions to try to mitigate this, not to the satisfaction of the property owner. One thing I would say, which is news to me, I was provided case law, and any golf ball going on to private property does cause us to to trespass. So it's something that we do need to try to address, we do have a plan to continue to address, we have taken action in which we moved the T-box to try to prevent some of this from happening, and we are going to put up some natural vegetation. I think the solution being sought is one that some of the neighbors wouldn't appreciate, so we're trying to find something that is palatable to all sides. But I will, I have exchanged some phone calls with the insurance company and tried to get some additional direction from them on that topic.
Thank you. Michael?
I was sent that email, forwarded that email, it was a demand, it wasn't a suit, correct? Nobody filed a suit yet, basically?
It was a demand, you're-
So the attorney said they demand that we do, and sent us the case law. And just for full disclosure, I did get a call from the homeowner, I did go to the house, I did view the bag of golf balls and the photos that I believe you also did.
I viewed them.
So, you know, I mean, at this point, I guess the insurance company is involved, based on the letter in the packet, but isn't this as simple as us just doing something to fix this, other than the Lelands that we planted that didn't work? Don't we, as a board, just make a decision and keep the lawyers out of it and put up a net?
But the problem is that the other abutters are not happy with that idea.
The problem with that is the other abutters don't own this guy's property.
Well, they also abut the property, the golf course. So, I mean, it doesn't mean that one person who's in a butter takes over the other rights of the other abutters. So ultimately, I think we have to go follow suit with what you've already been doing, but also go to the insurance company on that piece of it.
I'm fine with it, I just want to be on the record that this is private property, and the case law that I read was based on private property, and I don't see how an abutter, whether they're in a butter or not in a butter, to the same hole, same fairway, same anything, gets to decide that this gentleman doesn't have to have his property rights because they don't want them.
But, and I could be wrong, but I believe with the netting that would be proposed, you're going to affect the other abutters.
Now, if there's a wing.
Well, we have to keep the netting on town property.
Or his.
But, yeah, I don't-
He'd have to grant a some easement if it was his.
Right, so there's a few legal issues. We will see what we can address. We do have some additional thoughts for additional plantings and so on, but I just wanted to kind of report that we are working on that. Just a couple other things, on October 3rd, we had a meeting over at the Cultural Center and had a pretty good turnout in terms of that, and just a plug for the homeowner's sewer connection guidebook. I know Selecton Ballantyne and Selecton Howell were both in attendance at that meeting, so I think that for folks that were there and folks that weren't there, we do have good resources online to be able to walk people through pretty carefully what the appropriate next steps are. And there is no dire emergency or urgency for people to take action right now, but certainly people should be doing some of their homework and following some of the steps that were laid out in the guidebook.
Dawn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we go any further, because I'm not going to lose any opportunity I can to say this over and over again, we said it last Wednesday, too.
Pardon, Don, what?
We said this last Wednesday, too, I'm not going to give up any opportunity to say it. As far as an engineer goes, because there is definitely a firm out there who's trying to create a sense of urgency amongst the community members, there's three different kinds of engineering going on. There's the engineering that is required to put the pipes in the road, there's engineering to tie up to the stub, and there's an engineer who could conceivably give you a plot plan to show you where to put this thing. As far as that third category of engineer goes, we have no requirement that somebody hire an engineer to show where it's going to come out of your foundation. You could even do it on the back of an envelope if you wanted to. But there is no town contractor, there is no preference list for that, there is no requirement for you to sign up with an engineer to show where the pipe is going to go out of your house. So if you want to do it, that's fine, but as- So, if, if you wanna do it, that's fine, but as was said at that meeting, the state code may change. In the meantime, then you may have to revisit whatever you get as a plan, so. Before people sign up en masse, and they appear to be doing that, and six is here and seven's there, we're not requiring anything right now, as a town.
So, just to clarify on that, too, right, that, let, you know, this has been constantly alleged, Larry and I have had different experiences, and I will say that ultimately, I have not at all experienced that strong-armness. And the only other thing I can say to that point is our neighborhood, too, has reached out to multiple other people. And in terms of that, you know, the bids and such are, are for people to decide, and ultimately, people, and I'm not, I don't know the specific stories, but I will say that they may be being confused by the fact that they're at, being asked, communities in, in, and in particular, my neighborhood, I know Larry's had similar situations. If you're looking to sign on, they're looking to schedule things, they're not, I, my understanding is, the firm is not saying, you must do this, or you will fail and not be on, you know, be able to be, uh, provided our services. So, we've gotta be very careful, 'cause at this point, I think we've gone a little bit too far in bashing. So, we're not gonna name anybody, but I think, you know, in all fairness, different communities and different residential areas are reaching out because a provider is willing to put out those services. The feedback I'm getting from the various other services are out there is fair, everybody should reach out. But ultimately, people should be doing their homework, because although they're not in dire need to connect, if you wanna determine certain pieces of this project, it, there is no harm in being prepared. You also need to be prepared for the schedule that you hope to have. So, again, you may have a situation where you have five or six neighbors that wanna sign up, and you may, and maybe you collectively make that decision, or you don't. That is the homeowner's ability to make that decision. But I don't think that we should continuously say, it's not a big deal, it's not a hurry, because ultimately, pieces of this puzzle need to be solved. And I don't think you wanna drive home the idea that you can come in, draw something on the back of a napkin, and think you did a good job. And, you know, the overall border health regulations and the sanitarian versus, uh, the engineer and all of those pieces are still, they're still being discussed. So we need to be extremely careful about that kind of information that we're putting out there.
But there was feedback that night from people who were told specific dates that if they did not contract-
Well, that, that could be, but-
Point of order, I just always wanted to say it.
I, I just, and that's a good, and that's a good comment.
So, I, I mean-
I, I take that point, but, uh, and I guess each neighborhood's different, but, uh, my, my neighbors actually, if there's anyone, any party that was aggressive, it was my neighborhood. They tried very much, they wanted help, they, they contacted several groups, they pressed them to, uh, uh, give them some guidance going forward. And then knowing that there's different, what people misunderstand is, there's, uh, the initial part, then there's actual plan, has to be submitted.
That's right.
But, and that gets confused a bit. But the only, uh, and, and I agree, I haven't been to every, every neighborhood meeting, but in ours, the, uh, uh, you know, putting pressure, if you're saying putting pressure on people to sign up, was not to do the work, 'cause we did, there's no one, no one pressured them to sign up. The, the offer was, if they had a group of, uh, whatever the number was, ten or fifteen, I forget, they felt that, uh, they could, uh, offer a discount, 'cause they could work at, you know, do a, a good plan, so they could do house A, house B, side by side, not move equipment around-
Right.
Or people around. But none of that, none of those comments were, uh, are relevant, quite frankly, to the, to the discussions we had. And, and where was gold at?
Right, and, and to that point, you, you know, you, whoever you sign up with has to eventually come out and look at your site and put this information together, so. Michael?
I mean, we all get this, we've been talking about it for years.
Yeah.
The average homeowner doesn't, so I, you know, I gotta side with Don a little bit on this, and, and defend Don a little bit on this, 'cause I've got family members-
Point of order.
Family members that felt pressured and felt like they, you know, and I've told them to, that they didn't, and they've calmed down, but, you know, it is what it is, but can we get down to this meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, totally, but I just think we gotta be careful, like we consistently bring this up and, and, we've gotta be careful not to bash, so. Uh, Ed?
Well, I guess, I, I guess what, what really concerns me is that we, um, what, what most people are worrying about is the cost of this thing. And, you know, quite honestly, hooking a, uh, existing house up to a new sewer line that's properly elevated in the street to be able to make the technic, technician is not rocket science. But we have a series of regulations that force them into going for a, uh, retaining a, a professional, uh, at a fairly high cost level. Um, we have a whole other set of regulations that, I've been told, makes it impossible for, uh, homeowner to dig his own trench. There's not a whole lot of rocket science in digging a trench to put a pipe in, you know. But we have, we're constantly saying, you know, guys, you know, we understand you're concerned about, about the cost of this thing, but we have all these regulations that are gonna make you, push you into the highest cost way of doing this.
I don't really know where we have a lot of leniency on that, when they're-
Just a, a, a couple things, and I really don't wanna prolong this, if I can help it, but you guys keep-
You did, you realized-
Ministry of Health report time, it's, it's, I'm trying, I'm trying to get through the material. So, just to the point, CDM is the contractor that is the engineer that's doing the design. Any work that's being done at the house is being done through an engineer. We do have in our regulation right now, board regulation, that it's a requirement for an engineer. I have had discussion as of today, or-
For the hookup.
For the hookup, just for the hookup. I have had discussions today with John Giorgio, and he believes, and I agree with him based upon his comments, that we could, uh, put together a change to our own regulations to allow sanitarian, to allow for a longer period of time to connect in, and just inform Chatham that that's the road we're going down. And then they could agree, or, or agree that they don't wanna do it, uh, but I think that we would have some flexibility. So I think those items of flexibility, I'm gonna ask for those, uh, changes to your regulations be made, so we have that flexibility, and inform Chatham that that's the road we're going down. Uh, I will also say that, uh, we are looking at some of the other elements, how to decrease the cost for, for folks. Uh, just, uh, it, you will have probably in the next meeting, or the meeting after, the order of taking for those four pump stations and the cross-country runs, just to legally have the ability to construct this. We do have to make more progress on that in order to do the SRF funding. That SRF application will be going in on Monday, uh, we've shown a good faith effort to start doing that. I will be engaging the services of a, a praiser, uh, to come in and look at the value of those easements to, to do that part of it. Uh, just a couple more, so just, uh, upcoming event notes. At the DHY meeting, the, uh, the Community Partnership Meeting on Friday, uh, there was just a, another discussion that, uh, they're looking at having the three towns get together on October twenty-fifth, Thursday, at six o'clock, over at the Dennis Council on Aging, and to do an overview, to the point of education of what we're doing, the three towns. And they did recommend at that meeting to have representation from the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and the Wastewater Committee, uh, to attend that. So I just wanna make sure I get that out there, DHY, October twenty-fifth at six, at the Dennis Council on Aging. Whether a quorum of the boards there or not, we probably will post, just to cover ourselves, uh, in terms of that. But it is an opportunity to get a overview of the, uh, the, what we're doing.
And Q and A.
And Q and A. Uh, and then on October twenty-second, uh, we are trying to line up for the, the board. Uh, we had Montomoy Regional School District was gonna come in and do a overview of their enrollment and so on, uh, and to have a, a larger meeting to talk about capital, uh, with the Selectmen and Finance Committee, uh, in attendance to get input prior to, uh, this process. I was actually shocked today, when we looked at the, uh, the schedule, by October thirty-first, I have to send budget instructions out for the operating budget. So, things are moving pretty quickly, uh, just as a FYI. Uh, we also started doing some interviewing today for the Council on Aging Director. I have a few people in place down there, temporary people to kinda, even though I'm not down there, to get some, you know, make sure we're keeping the labor front up. Uh, so it is my hope that, uh, we're doing a second round, not a second round, uh, additional interviews on Friday. So hoping to secure potentially a, a good candidate to, to transition that. And that concludes my, uh, comments this evening.
Thank you, Chris. Don?
Nothing.
Ed?
Nothing.
Michael?
Not really, yeah.
Larry? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I skipped a, point of order.
Oh, crap.
So I just wanted to take a moment and thank each and every board member for the amount of time that they put into this government, and to the amount of meetings they attend, to the amount of packets they read, and to the amount of work that they do. We don't always agree, often we don't, and wait for it. And thank you, Chris, for as much as you, as much as you bring forward to us. And I bring this up because everything that the citizens read on social media isn't necessarily true. I know you might find that hard to believe, but just because you read it on Howard's Old Timers, it's not necessarily factual. Uh, it's pretty aggravating as a sitting selectman to be called, called the things that we are and called out, when you have the same ten people out of the thousand members commenting under every negative post that they can put up. And the most recent one, I thought that was very humorous, was the marijuana one that was put up, and how dumb we all are. But none of the people that had commented, I could see going back in any of the twenty-five or thirty meetings that we had, to come up with what we came up with, so. Thank you for all you do, and to the general public, just because it's on Howard's Old Timers doesn't mean it's true, and this board does care about this down.
Thank you, Michael, very nice words. Larry?
I move for adjourned.
Thank you. We adjourned.